Please. Mr. Vogel, would you lead us in pledge, please?
Certainly.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sunita Kirk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Katniss.
Here.
Commissioner Hood.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Here.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And clerk to the board Kelly Cantor, present.
Okay. In looking at our agenda, do we have any additions or things we want to change on the agenda?
No.
Can I add the, I want to talk about the, um, audio, give them out the audio for this.
The one that go on to the web thing or?
No, to a, to a citizen, when they ask for a copy of it.
Okay, let's put that under, after the underfunded courthouse?
That'll work.
Okay. Any other additions to the agenda? Do I motion to approve the agenda as amended? So move.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as stated.
Second.
Whatever. All in favor say aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Thank you. At this point, we would like to have the audience introduction. The reason we do this is so that we can get your voice on record, so later when you make comments and we try to figure out who it was, maybe we will recognize it. Let's start over here with you, Candy, if we might.
Candy Sage.
Lisa Dugan.
Vince Dugan.
Kristy Dom.
Charles Vogel.
Wilson Jarvis.
Hey, I'm one.
Jackie Bubus for the Sentinel.
Charles Johnson.
Okay. Thank you very much. At this time, we're ready for any public comments that people in the audience would like to make. No one has a comment? Okay, thank you very much. I think we have, do we have some minutes to approve or just to look at? Okay. We'll go on to the next item, will be attorney items. Counselor?
I did a little research on the issue about road signs and requiring road signs in the subdivisions. I can't find anything that makes it mandatory. There are some jurisdictions around the country that do have codes to that effect, but there's nothing that I can see. I was talking to J.D. about that. It's, I think it would be almost impossible to enforce something like that even if we required it to be done. What I've found is that the signs out in Centennial Ranch especially disappear very quickly. I think they've put them up at least three different times over the years and they're all, a lot of them just disappear right away. It's not something that a county is required to do and I, I think it would be almost impossible to enforce any kind of ordinance requiring the subdivisions to maintain road signs.
Okay. For the audience, we have some areas that are hard to identify when we get a call out to them. We've had one call out twice to an area in Centennial Ranch to residents and the roads aren't marked and took quite a while to find it wandering around this stuff. Both of these were quasi-emergency calls. The concern that I have, and I want to be sure that we're clear of this, is that if we get to a subdivision and can't find it, from our county responsibility for safety, where does our effort end if we made a due diligence?
There's no liability. I mean, they are county roads. We haven't accepted those roads. I mean, if they, if we had accepted the roads and were maintaining, then it's our obligation, of course, to keep the signs up.
But if somebody's having a medical emergency, that would be the ambulance corps and bringing in search and rescue or whatever, if they had to get them out. We don't have the responsibility to get them into the residence, if it's a private road.
No, it's not. Our, there's no liability that would attach to the county for that. It's, I guess it's just a risk people assume when they want to live out in the, you know, the rugged rural areas of the West.
Okay, great. Anything else?
That's all I wanted to talk about.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item we have is executive session and we're going to be going into that in about 10 minutes. I think we'll start with the two of you. We'll move down to the new and old business until that time.
Okay.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to invite Charles Vogel. Whoever else come up and give us an update on the executive call, Counselor.
Good morning.
Good morning to you.
Thank you. Seeing me like it's already August, what do you mean happy year? Well, time goes faster when you're having fun, right?
I like the additions here with that some stuff.
Help yourself. We use those as bribes?
I was going to say, it's hard to talk and chew on a good cookie at the same time.
That's what we found, that's what we're offering to you. Please go ahead.
Economic Development had some constructive criticism laid on us that we had not been adequately communicating with various entities, so I will warn you, this is session one of what will probably be a quarterly briefing or if anything else comes up, so, and I believe you've already got the copies of the outline.
The news to us are 16 and 17.
Yeah. Hopefully subsequent ones, we can be a little more abbreviated than to catch up on this, but a lot of the things that we started in 2016 will be coming to fruition this year. Obviously, the kind of the first item is those of us within the economic development, but a combination of the, our positions on various appointed committees by the county and others. We've been busy, gone to a lot of meetings, but representing the county in those forums. Significant last year, we did, in cooperation with the two towns, overturned Senate Bill 152, so that cleared the path as far as our broadband issues go. Another item that we were able to do, maybe not quite as successful as we've turned out, but we've established a virtual work center at the library in cooperation with the workforce office and we realized we need to educate and ask for support on that for anybody that is either looking for a job or that needs to hire. That's a facility that basically keeps you from having to go to Colorado or to Canyon City or, or at the worst case, Salida, to get into that system.
Yes, good question, Charles. How do you promote that? I don't remember seeing anything in the papers.
There was, there was something when we first got it activated and we've realized in talking with Amy and them that basically it's underutilized and part of the deal is, this is the third status report that we've given. We've talked to your counterparts in both towns and some of you have heard this before, but the idea of we, it is a difficult thing to get the word out, but the idea is using the newspapers and the radio station and getting it within the business community. I had occasion to talk last week to one of our major Silver Cliff employers and he in fact is using it, Critical Path Metal Works, and really spoke highly of the support he's got out of the offices up there to work the advertisements and such like that. But we've never, this community has never used workforce all that much, so talking with the supervisor down there, I would expect that we'll have some community sessions and stuff like that with businesses to try to get the word out.
Is there any signage in the library?
No, and there's nothing on their website. I've talked to Amy and really this came to a head just a couple of weeks ago and so we need to try to get the word out.
I think you should also put something in the window of the economic development building.
Like I say, with everything that's happening right now, we just, we have good intentions, but we haven't really been able to activate anything.
Let's move on.
We've, some of us have helped the school as far as their efforts on housing. In fact, I was out there yesterday, day before, and I would suggest that's going to be a real asset for the school district and as a matter of information, it would be interesting. They've got everything studded up and all and they're getting ready to put the sheetrock in, but that'll be a tool that they can use. In fact, they've got candidate teachers in this week and that's one of the things they'll be showing them. Another thing is we facilitated the efforts in dealing with two sector partnerships that are involved, the four counties of the Upper Arkansas Area Council of Governments. Again, it's a matter of activating our businesses because those are in the health and welfare and the tourism. We, we need to educate our businesses, what the sectors are and what it can help on that. Associated with that, I think you all should have got copies on a transportation survey. That's one of the elements that they realize that for employee movement between possible job sites and tourism, we can complement the tourism and in all truthfulness, Fremont and Chaffey County have got established what I would refer to as like our rotary van on steroids. There, there's some time ahead of us and there's really an opportunity for us to work with them and upgrade our public transportation here. One of the grants we got last year in help with your predecessors, we got about just under $10,000 DOLA grant and of that, we established our new website and some promotional materials and such like that and that has gone reasonably well. You're also aware that in cooperation actually with DOLA and the city of Silver Cliff, we got a $5,000 grant which improved their Wi-Fi in their park area and also was a stimulus to educate all the governments on the possibilities of SIPA support. A big, a big item we got from DOLA was just about a 30, yes.
You mentioned SIPA, that is State Internet Portal Authority.
You got it.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry about that. I slipped past some of these acronyms. We are currently nearing the completion of phase three of this $38,000 grant, surveying the county as far as being able to improve Wi-Fi. On the 3rd of March, we will have a meeting scheduled for 1:00 at the library where we will show that, actually identified six sites where we can substantially improve the broadband coverage in the county from what's estimated now at about 40% to upwards to 80% if we in fact activate towers and Wi-Fi from those six locations. You'd be glad to see too, the GIS data we got from the county really helped quantify that, so I really would encourage if at all possible, some representation there in attendance because the tools that our contractor are using are quite graphic and informative and it shows the quality of support that we're getting out of Centerline Solutions.
Excuse me just a second, it was 1:00 on the 3rd of March.
1:00 on the 3rd.
At the library.
At the library and we'll send out confirmation and on that. One of the things that was an additional benefit on that, they offered basically at no additional cost to us, they have a SUV that can run around with six different cell phone. They surveyed the state highways and our major county roads and continuously showing and tracking the quality of cellphone signal and it's quite a graphic representation that kind of explains why we've got the cellphone situation we've got. And two of the six towers that they're proposing, they think would be good candidates for cellphone providers to put additional efforts on that. And so that'll be one of our initiatives once the study is completed. We're expecting it's scheduled for completion late in the third quarter and then we'd be able, based on that, to seek additional funding to start at least one tower fabrication. In spite of the weather and reservations for folks in Pueblo to come up during the winter, we do have four companies here in the county that we're supporting with Small Business Development Center and it varies from a startup to quite a mature company that's looking at further growth and further hitting in their market and so that, that is, that's paying dividends as far as support of our local business. We did support the Southern Colorado Economic Development District SWAT analysis and of course, we're all looking forward to that coming up.
What is SWAT?
What is it?
Strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats.
Yes. And as some of us would suspect it, while that is satisfying schedule requirements, one of the things that we're looking at is, and we see the possibilities of two grants that can progress and accomplish one of our two goals this year and that's of a strategic, economic development strategic plan. There's a, an OEDIT opportunity by the end of the month and there's also DOLA opportunity subsequent to that and the good news is the timeline on these really complement themselves and if we don't happen to win one of the OEDIT grants, then we'll still have an opportunity to pick it up and I've communicated with representatives in both those organizations and the idea of having a continual plan that'll go from one funding source to the other, so have high possibilities of success there. And that, that economic development strategic plan is one of two goals for this year. We did get picked for a county initiative back in October on our trails and we're working with the interested parties to basically better organize, maintain and promote the various and multiple trails we've got here in the county. I'll have to admit, over the holidays, that, that effort has kind of slowed down, but we will get that back in the next month. We did initiate and you all became the brunt of it, the discussion with DOLA about the possibilities of developing a fiber optic loop between Werfino and Canyon City and I guess what I'd say is economic development stands ready to assist you all in that effort and we should hope that, that in this kind of slow time of the year in a lot of ways, that we can get that initiative started.
Where we are on that one, I've talked to Fremont County and I haven't had time to talk to Worfon because they had some new commissioners and stuff coming out, but we'll in the very near future talk to them.
I was able to talk to Werfino at one of the meetings, so we just have to initiate a coming.
But from what I understand from DOLA, you know, they suggested and rightfully so that you all initiate that and obviously, we're certainly interested in supporting that effort and realizing that's, that's something that's going to take a lot of organization and substantial funding eventually, so.
Have a question.
In talking to those two counties, what kind of reaction did you get from?
Very positive from Fremont.
That's good.
Mine was very brief and they just said, listen.
And last but not least is another goal that we've got for this year and that's somehow to, after almost five years of operation of economic development, that we want to try to work with some of the resources that are available to come up with some sort of sustainable financial efforts for economic development, so.
Do you have any questions? Excellent report. Jackie, do you have a copy of this?
I just.
I commend you for all the things, you know, we do things one at one project at a time, but when you take time to sit down and write them up, that's quite impressive.
That was our intent.
Okay, thank you very much. Everybody noticed he's taking a cookie with him now he's done talking.
I keep my strength up.
At this time, ladies and gentlemen, we do have a, we hope a fairly short executive session scheduled on a personnel matter and at this time, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we suspend the county commissioners meeting of this morning, go into executive session and back into regular session after that's over.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Prince made a motion, seconded by Commissioner Hood, to go into executive session citing Colorado revised statutes 24-6-402 regarding a personnel issue. At this time, I will declare the county commissioner meeting in recess and I will be reconvening the executive session and we don't think we'll take no offense.
We have to vote on that. We vote on that?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, folks, please.
Be aware of that.
Well, we didn't appreciate that.
That was thinking in my mind that the budget could stay.
That was not to be suggested to this way. At this time, I would like to call back into order the Board of County Commissioners meeting, February 8th, 2017, at 10 o'clock. I attest that I am the chairperson of the Costa County Board of Commissioners and confirm that the discussion remained on topic and that no matters were adopted and no actions or decisions were made.
And as the county attorney will affirm, that we did discuss a personnel issue that was recorded. No decision was made during that session.
Okay. All right, at this time, I would like to modify the agenda just a little bit. We are in the process, as you know, of selecting a road boss and I would entertain a motion for action on this item.
I'd like to make a motion that we elevate Mr. Gary Hyde from his current position with road and bridge to road and bridge supervisor.
I'll second that motion as stated.
Okay, any discussion? On part of the discussion, on my behalf, we did receive a number of applications. We went through and followed all of our hiring policies in terms of reviewing and ranking and selecting and so forth and then we brought in three candidates for interviews and then as an outgrowth of the interviews, we asked Mr. Hyde to come back today. We completed the interview process and the negotiations and that's how we arrived at where we are. Do any of you have a question? Yes, ma'am?
Is this Mr. Hyde?
Pardon?
Is this Mr. Hyde?
Yes, this is Gary Hyde, but we need to vote on the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carried. It's my pleasure to introduce Costa County Road Supervisor Gary Hyde. For the rest of you, Mr. Hyde brings to us 20, 30 years of experience on road issues. He was a road boss in Kansas for a number of years, road supervisor in a county about twice the budget that we have here, so it's something that based upon his experience and resumes we feel we're lucky to give you and welcome of our Gary.
Thank you.
See you later. Okay. All right, let's see, we're ready for saddle cum. Roger, we're going to be a little while. What Mountain Valley Saddle Cum?
You?
I have a letter.
I have the letter and I have a concern.
The.
That I brought up to our attorney and Clint is in agreement. I think via an email, I sent out the fact when I saw this, I was in attendance with the fair board meeting in January and it was brought to my attention that a water line that is on the fairgrounds that the county owns was maliciously damaged. I had asked at that time if a sheriff's report was made or even if the sheriff was called and it was indicated to me that they had not done that. So my issue is, we don't know what the cost is for that repair and that we should have some sort of monetary figure to know that this $5,000 hopefully is not going to go to waste if it happens again, if we fix it and we put out this money and the same thing occurs.
Okay, to bring you up to date, if we establish this year's budget, we did budget $5,000 to the saddle cum as part of our community improvements, so the money is also, has already been allocated. Let me, as a counsel, should I read this letter to the audience or no?
It's a perfect read.
Okay, this letter was dated February 1st, 2017. Funding request to whom it may concern, we're respectfully asking that the Conservation Trust Fund for the release of funds in the amount of $5,000 to aid in the repair of the broken water pipes at the fairgrounds. We continue our commitment to youth and to bringing more visitors to Costa County, stimulating our businesses. Saddle Cum this year has demonstrated an open line of communication with our county's Forest Organization with our president George Kuhn sitting on the board. Looking forward to continued partnership, providing new exciting platforms of opportunities and growth for our kids by utilizing our surrounding property and coordinating our efforts with Forest. So What Mountain Valley Saddle Cum is a nonprofit organization that was established, she says committed, but established in 1946 to serving the community and its members. We would be grateful for your support as we continue to support our town and community to the best of our ability in a struggle to continue our historic rodeo each year, helping each other maintain and to thrive as a community proud of its history and forefathers. Someplace I've received an earlier communication wanting us to endorse the fact they could use that for a tractor. The only way that they qualify for this funding is in some manner, it benefits recreation and that's where we, I think we have to look at. So I'm open to your, you know, what we want to do with this. We appropriate the money to them and then it has to benefit. Now, this is on the, on the county property, which we own very little out there and I don't know what the cost is going to be and if this is something that we need to handle as a county cost or I think maybe to our advantage if they want to use these funds to fix the pipe, it saves us some additional cost of fixing the pipe.
I guess and where I'm coming from is we don't know what the cost is to fix the pipe, so it could be a thousand bucks. Then how are they going to utilize the other 4,000?
Well, the way it is, is that basically they say what they're going to do and we can go back to the letter maybe that they asked for the, for the funds, but they all are related to doing something, whether it's one group, we're cleaning the park or we're supporting the baseball diamond or whatever, it's all recreation related and basically, I don't think we've really come down and said, okay, to do this. I mean, we approved the funds that would be used to improve a community activity and then it's kind of up to their discretion. What we approved for the rotary, we don't question how they're going to spend the money. We basically spend it for the van, but we don't.
You don't follow along with it?
In the past, as long as they meet the general requirement.
We do.
We do, we have to report to the state what was done with the funds, and it has to follow the state's guidelines as to how they're used.
And that's a report after the funds have been expended?
Yes.
I absolutely agree with Commissioner Hood. We need to know what the cost of this is, because that cost will not be used for recreation, because you're correct in what the funds are for. So if in fact the funds, the cost of repairs are more than $5,000, then we have usurped our responsibility by giving them $5,000 for recreation, so I think it's an important point. I also would just like to make the comment, I'm very discouraged that vandalism took place, and our sheriff's department was not notified, I think, I think the saddle club.
Well, but it was on our property, it wasn't on the saddle club property.
Did we know about it?
The president...
It's our property, does saddle club check on our property?
No, but the fair board president knew that it happened and did not report it.
So that's not saddle club responsibility, that comes back to the fair board.
Did they report it to us and we didn't do anything about it?
Nothing was reported.
Okay.
I only, I was only president of meeting, and it was discussed.
I feel whoever notifies it need to notify the proper person or authority, if the proper person is us, should have notified us, or should have notified the sheriff's department. I...
Now, I'm going to ask you, with what you're saying is that last year, the rotary painted bleachers at the fairground, and we called that sufficient. How does repairing a water line any different than painting a bleacher?
I'm talking about reporting a vandalism that took place on a water line, I'm talking about, we ought to know...
But that's not the issue right now, we have the issue with the fair board asking for the $5,000.
Okay. You want to take a vote? Fine. Hold a question.
I'm not sure, I mean, we can, but okay, that's still right, do I hear a motion?
Commissioner?
Yes, sir?
I don't think the rotary van is qualified to do the repair of the plumbing.
Pardon me?
It's not rotary that's doing it, it's what that model is.
It's not, that's not, it's on the table.
You were talking about the bleachers that we did do last year, we wouldn't be able to take on that project.
Take on what?
We're not, we're not saying rotary, we're talking about saddle club.
Yeah, that had nothing, I was just using that as an example, where we provide funds to an organization, and they use it for the benefit of the community for recreation, and this year, their task was to paint the bleachers at the fairgrounds. Do I hear a motion?
In the past, Bob, you know, the, these groups come to you guys prior, they send in letters prior to budget. You set your budget and tell each group what you're going to give to them, they then, after the first of the year, they send you another letter requesting you to release these funds, and I think that's what the saddle club, that's all that they're doing, is requesting to release, so I don't even think you need a motion to do that, you just release the funds to them. They, the way that they, the way that Dola explained it in the past, is that you are paying them to do some sort of service to a county-owned, or state-owned, or federally-owned property that, for beautification or whatever.
For recreation.
And so that's where the, some of the work has been done on the fairgrounds, because the county owns the buildings that the fairgrounds uses, and that's where the bleachers, the bleacher painting comes in and all that kind of stuff. So I think, I think they're just asking for their release of their funds.
It's already done.
Yes.
Okay, so at this time, as per our policies, then we are able to, and we do have the funds available to release the $5,000 to the saddle club. Okay. Anything else to discuss?
I have a quick question in regards to the water, so can you speak to where, I mean, because I was on the fair board for 17 years, and I actually took care of the water and all the broken lines every year, because it was never installed properly, so...
I didn't physically see, at the fair board's monthly meeting, I don't, they weren't, I don't know that they were in attendance for that, but it was stated by past president Alicia Shy, she was made aware of the damage, and it looked like somebody took a heavy piece of, it could have been a hammer, and went all the way down the exposed line, damaging that pipe, and no report was made to the sheriff. So my concern is, you could go and fix this, and whoever that was could come back and do it again, okay? So I asked, George Coons was president, he just became a board member of the fair board, I asked him to please, if he noticed anything, to contact you, okay? And also the county commissioners with damage, if they see it.
Well, I mean, I can only speak for my experience having 48s, 248s. That line has always been a problem, because it wasn't installed properly, and at some point the county's, we've been talking about it for years, the county needs to fix it correctly, it needs to be buried in the ground, so that we don't have the freezing issues, but yeah, that exposed PVC, that's unfortunate that happened, because it's always been, it's always taken a couple days to get the water lines repaired before we turn the water on each spring, so that's going to compound the labor and time and cost.
Okay. And we do need to move on, if that's, are you comfortable moving on?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The next item we have is the AMS ambulance certification, and I believe the, let me out, Brenda, which group certifies the ambulance, one of our committees we appointed?
I think it's, I don't know, SCRETAC?
Right, RETAC does the certification.
Yeah.
And we do have a document here to sign. You, I hear a motion at this time to approve the certification of the ambulance service license.
I'll make a motion to approve the Custer County Board of County Commissioners ambulance service license.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Jake?
No.
No? Any discussion? Any bails? All right, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in the same sign, motion carries. The next item we have is the underfunded courthouse request for proposals. I've requested that we pull together addresses and places we can send the folks for a proposal for the architecture work on the courthouse. To bring the rest of you up to speed on this, we did a, we got some money from Dola two years ago, about $14,000, that we were able to utilize to do a survey of our courthouse, a needs assessment. The result of that needs assessment were three particles, or three options. One is to build a new judicial center, which would be about $7 million. The second was to build the county administration building, which would be about $5 million, or five and a half. The third option was to build on to the current court facilities, we do nothing other than court facilities, build on to the court facilities, and modify it and improve the security. Right now, we're one of the four least secure, I guess that's the right word to use back there, Mike, help me out, but we're one of the four least secure courthouses in the state. Is that a fair statement, because they identified us among the bottom four?
That's, that wasn't my understanding, but...
Oh, well, but we were identified as...
I've seen worse.
Well, but we were identified by the chief justice as one of four facilities that they identified that were a priority to improve. So, that's where we are. Do I hear a motion to proceed with the request for proposal?
I'll make that motion that we move to proceed with the request for proposal, with the list that has been developed of potential companies that can assist.
I'll second the motion as stated.
It's been moved and seconded, we're moving to the discussion phase. The building of a court facility is a little bit different than the building of a commercial building. The plans that we're looking at involve some holding cells, a Sally Port back here, separate entrances and exits for the judge. We don't have any space right now for attorneys to meet, other than in here and in the break room. Shannon, what were those numbers that you had, kind of roughly, last month, or cases or people that went through, or you had them last meeting, I think you?
Oh, Jesus, somebody...
Just in the month of January this year, we had over 250 people doing business in the courtroom, and out of 20 business days in January, the court was used for 16 of those days, so we've had court activities all the four days just in January of this year.
So you can see where we are, folks. One of the proposals we're expanding is to, is putting a basement under the addition, and that basement could be used in as a second courtroom. At this time, all we're doing is requesting proposals, and we have $140,000 for this next study. Anything else?
Good.
At this time, I will call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in the same sign, motion carries. And we will send them, we have a list that's been sent to us from the court people, of firms that are qualifying to do this type of work, and we will also, I believe, that we advertise it in our local paper, because it is a public notice, and if they want information or want details, we do have the report that was generated in the last phase, that would be available to them electronically. Okay, let's move on now to the, Kelly had some questions on the audio recording of our meetings.
I just want some clarification. In the past, audio recordings were not released prior to minutes being approved for that particular meeting. Then, a few years before Debbie left, that had changed, where a person could get them prior to the minutes being approved, and so I just want some clarification on how you guys want to do that, so that, because I have somebody wanting minute, or wanting an audio right now, and the minutes have not been approved yet.
Can I defer to question? Glenn, could you help us with that?
I think that the audio recording should be released as soon as it's available. The minutes are the official record of what happened, but I don't see any harm in letting somebody have the audio recording, with the understanding it's not any official record, the minutes are the official record. So my recommendation would be, if somebody wants to see, listen to the minutes, you get a copy of them, we should just go ahead and do it.
They pay for that copy?
I think, I think we need to allow 24-hour period or something for the release of these. As an example, you record, yesterday we got done at 4:00. I don't know if you've got that ready for the release this morning, or if you still had to make copies and so forth. I think we need a little bit of time in there to get them ready, but that's just what I, what do you think?
I can, I mean, when we get done today at 4:00, if it's at 4:00, I can copy a thing at 4:05. I mean, it just, it would be, I guess, whoever wanted them would just have to, it just takes me a few seconds to copy it.
Okay, so we'll say that would be suggested, we would make them available at the conclusion of the county commissioners' meeting, unless the meeting concludes after the closing of the courthouse.
Right. During business hours.
Yeah, because I want you here at 6:30 getting the thing on the web. Does that make sense to you guys?
Fine.
And yes, Don, it does cost money.
Pardon me?
It does cost money.
And I would like to, I would like to, some clarification on that also, because in the past, it's always been $10 for a CD. We've discussed that before, because just me personally, I thought that was a little high. Most people bring me a flash drive to put it on, their own flash drive, so what I've been doing is, if they want a CD that I print from our CDs, I charge them $10. If they bring me a flash drive, I charge them $5.
For your time?
Just to add curiosity, Helen, does it, how much of your time is taken to do this if someone...
About 30 seconds. Unless we have problems, right?
Well, yes, that has happened.
In that case, I think your policy sounds very appropriate to me.
$5 if you take their flash drive, and 10 if you supply it. And that's what it's been? I have no issue with that. Again, I'd like to appeal that those should be on the website and free. I'd like to, I'd love to see those on the website and free for citizens, so that they don't have to come in here during business hours, and they shouldn't have to pay for them. I mean, I do respect your time, but $5 for 30 seconds, really? I mean, it, I've paid it, I've done it many times, so, and I will continue to pay it if that's the way I have to do it, I only do that when I miss a meeting.
If I want to buy a newspaper, if I want to read a newspaper, I got to buy it, don't I?
Well, but that's a product of a business, this is a product of the county government.
It is, and it's a business from the standpoint of cost to the taxpayers.
Well, okay, that's up to you, certainly that's up to you.
I think that leads us to another question, and that is, and we'll be talking about that, I think, later today, let's see what we can do to get this uploaded onto the website, and if that were the case, that would take away the need to come in here and...
Absolutely.
And get a quick copy.
Absolutely. We're just still waiting to see about the video streaming, okay, that deadline with SIPA was on the 20th, so we're waiting to hear where we are with that.
Am I correct, if someone comes in and would like to listen to the audio, and maybe put their flash drive, their little recorder up next to it, we don't charge for that, is that right? So it is available for free if someone chooses? Is that, am I correct in thinking that?
You know, I've never, or we've never had anybody, we've had somebody come in and we've set up, I have to set up my laptop, and they sit there and listen to it if they don't want to purchase one. I don't know that we've ever had anybody record that onto one, but they could, I suppose.
With no charge, right? Okay, so that's available at no charge, it's just for the convenience, they'd be paying a minimal, minimal amount, so, I mean, whatever you guys want to do is fine with me, I can't see how it's going to either make or break the county either way, so, you know, whatever you think's appropriate.
Can I just say something about the SIPA? The grant, the live streaming is a service that they provide already, so we don't need a grant for that. What we need is equipment, and they don't, the grant does not apply to equipment either. So the grant that I applied for, for the live streaming, they denied, but I did apply for a grant for the GIS mapping. So the live streaming thing, that's just a matter of getting the equipment, because they already provide the service to livestream.
Well, I think it's also a matter of what our capacity is out of here.
Exactly.
So it's not, you know, we say a word and then you get the next one.
They will not provide money for any kind of equipment.
But you receive that in writing from SIPA?
Yes.
Could I have a copy of that?
Sure.
We're drifting here, let's get back to the question you had. I will entertain a motion for any part of this, or all of it, regarding the video, I mean, the audio recordings, the cost of the recordings, and clarification on when they're available.
I'll make a motion to stay with the current policy, which is $5 if our recorder or clerk has to record on your USB, and $10 if she has to supply a CD, and that, at the end of a BOCC business day, that that would be available unless we go past 4:00.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
Do we have any more discussion?
I applaud your commissioners, I just, the one thing I would ask, if someone brought in their own CD, would that have been the same $5 as if they brought in a flash drive?
I don't see any difference.
I wouldn't think so, I think it's the cost to the...
I just applaud you in the fact that I think someone being able to have a recording is the same as being here in the 10 minutes. Thank you.
Come here all looking to me. The issue I have is the practicality. We meet roughly four times a month, and in 12 months, that's 48 potential recordings. At 48 potential recordings at $5, that's $240 in income. Is it worth the $240 in income to the county to charge that much? Or is this something for $240 we can provide as a service for our people? That was...that's what I've come down to. What's the...we got the principle, the mission of operational reality. Do either of you have a comment, thought on that?
No.
No.
Quick question for you, sir. Has there been a cost analysis on what it would take to get an audio/video recording system set up to where it could just be recorded and thrown up on the webpage?
We're working on that, and we did upload...I think Jackie uploaded one of our business... one of the recordings, and I think it's something we can do fairly seamlessly, but technically we're not there today.
I was just curious. Yeah. That would really be the whole issue and make it really simple.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, aye. Motion carries. All right. Now we are ready for Road and Bridge. Road and Bridge in the hallway.
There, there.
Here comes Cindy, coming after...coming after goodies.
She told me to, so it looked like a good time.
Come in, come in. Grab a chair. You guys want a cookie? Help yourself?
Oh, no, thanks.
Not blown away yet?
Not yet, but it is morning.
Roger.
It is definitely windy.
Good morning, sir.
Hi, Clint.
Howdy.
Hi, Kelly. We have your report on the activities last month. One question I have...I guess we got this fixed, but what we had was a 2015 budget. Was that just...I don't understand why I got a 2015 budget.
Barbie, I asked Barbie about that, and she said it was just a typo that she...
Okay. All right. That makes sense then.
Oh.
Didn't even notice that. Sorry about that.
My big deal. I just was looking at those numbers, thought, well...okay. Any...any issues you want to bring? Well, first of all, announcing, you probably already know, but we did hire Gary as the road boss, and we are opening up the assistant to everybody that wants to apply, and we encourage those that have applied before to apply. We will...in the minutes, it's said that the appointments we made were an interim appointment. That is reflected in the minutes, not that it was a final appointment, and we'll go forward from there. Do...what issues...do you...do you have any questions for the Road Bridge as we start?
No, this is a comprehensive report, and I appreciate it.
What can you bring us up to date on?
I don't know. I guess the only thing that has really been going on is trying to get this transition figured out.
Well, I commend...
So everybody can move forward with her work, so...
I commend the guys and what they've been doing. I don't know, Roger, how we avoid a deal like that damn snowstorm because we don't very often have a hot, warm storm in January. We had that ice build up there. I don't see any way around that, but it just happens. I think you guys did a good job on trying to get Road Cruise out and sanding and lock that ice down. The...I checked again, and I'm still pushing them, but I understand that we will probably get access to those gravel pits on the forest service, and it'd be sooner rather than later. I think we need to talk about some signs. Shannon?
Yes, sir.
I recall here someplace, or maybe you guys had a copy of it, that we wanted to look at the speed limit signs on Y Kegel. We had a letter requesting that we drop it from 35 down to 25. Do you have any thoughts? What's your input on it?
What happens is when you post those, it doesn't make any difference to me. It really doesn't. They just...all we're doing is spending money on signage that they just don't pay attention to. A 25 is awfully slow through that. Shannon and I have talked about this, and we haven't had an opportunity to go over it.
Let me read the letter to you that we received in January 3, 2017. We've got a copy of it. But it's not in our official records, and this is for the people in the audience and stuff. It has been brought to the attention of the Board of Directors of the Kernaverty Owners Association that the amount of traffic currently traveling Y Kegel Road in the Kernaverty Pines, the Hup Division, has greatly increased in the past few years. An issue of concern for the residents along this roadway is not only the amount of traffic, but the speed of those traveling on Y Kegel. Speed limit throughout Y Kegel is currently 35 miles an hour. There exist blind curves, dangerous intersections, many driveways entering the roadway, residents who walk along them right away. The board has been notified of a number of close accident scenarios recently and wish to request a reduction of speed limit to 25 miles per hour on Y Kegel Road. We also wish to request an addition of the appropriate number of caution high pedestrian traffic area signs along the same roadway. If possible, any additional speed deterrent available to the county roadway should be welcomed, would be welcomed and appreciated. Not only does the Board of Directors believe that this would benefit the safety of the residents and those who currently travel through development, but that it would preserve the surface of the roadway for longer periods of time. The washboarding that occurs between maintenance grading is itself a hazard to vehicle control. Thank you for your consideration of this request. Map is included, and residents are available to speak with the commissioner should more information be required. Sincerely...this is terrible. I N G E. Inge? Inge? Excuse me. Sorry, Inge. I should know that, but I...we're so often embarrassed, but I think the last name is Mundon.
Correct.
The big league is if you get 50% in your recognition. Secretary of the Kernaverty Owners Association. Okay.
So they just want those signs on Y Kegel?
I would ask if...would you like to address this, ma'am?
I would like to. Would you like me to be here or elsewhere?
Why don't you come up here and you're just where you can look at us and throw rocks at us? Is that where you go with the chair for you? Thank you, chair.
There you go. This issue, as you know from the letter, was brought to our attention by residents along the area. I personally feel that there are areas that are curvy and blind that might be greatly... the safety of the situation would be enhanced if it was 25 instead of 35. From an earlier discussion here today, I realized that signage can sometimes be an issue and disappear, and I hate to spend the money for the county on signs that may not be there when we need them. There are certain sections, such as the intersection of Choctaw and Y Kegel, which is...which already has a dangerous intersectional sign. However, that area can be critical if someone were traveling 35 up and over that particular... I mean, basically, we almost slow to a stop there when possible, when weather conditions permit. The other areas, the north end, that's more to the south end, and the other area is north end where Kiowa intersects, and that area is curvy, blind, hilly.
That's where you come around the hill and go down.
Yes. And those areas, when someone's walking or someone's pulling out of their driveway, is blind and is somewhat dangerous. The problem is not, like everyone says, it's with the fact that no matter what sign you put, people are going to travel at a speed without enforcement. So basically, in my opinion, this letter is written just to bring the issue before the county commission to see if possibly there would be a way to post a certain area that was 25 or have more enforcement for a period of time in that area, just to make people aware that it is in fact dangerous. When I drove through this morning at 35 miles an hour, some of those curves, I mean, prudence brings it down to 20. So it's just an issue to bring before the commission, and it landed in your lap because the residents originally, I think, complained to the sheriff's department, and whoever they spoke to there suggested possibly...
That's come to here.
Yes. So that's my story.
Shannon, what's your thoughts?
Well, I think, as this one explains, so there's a...I mean, it's more complicated than just the speed limit signs, as anybody that knows out there, because nobody obeys the speed limit signs unless you have enforcement. That's just the reality of it. And so I know we did address some speed limit. We added another sign on Choctaw last summer. When I say we, Road Bridge did it, but Roger and I went out there and evaluated the best place that we thought for it to set. I think, you know, we do...we do look around the county, and there's certain areas where we do reduce the speed limit because there's high resident, you know, there's a lot of houses in the area, there's kids that live there and they're playing. So we do do that in other areas of the county. It's something that we could look at. I know that blind hill on Y Kegel and Choctaw is terrible. I mean, they've had accidents there before, and that sign is up there for dangerous intersections there on...there by Kiowa, the same way. It's blind and hilly, so it's something we can certainly look at. But ultimately, it comes down to, do we go set up there and try to write some tickets on the folks? Now, we've had...we've gone out and tried to do a little bit of traffic enforcement. The problem comes down to is do you catch the folks that are doing it? Because ultimately, it comes down to what, you know, 10 or 12 residents that are really racing through there, the other folks are a little more prudent to it, and maybe have a young driver or something like that, but, you know, if I have a deputy go out there and he sets for an hour, hour and a half, and he sees three vehicles, it's hard to justify that because, quite honestly, I can't even patrol and do traffic enforcement on all the areas that I get complaints on, let alone the rest of the roadways. I mean, literally, we wrote a ticket this morning to somebody on Macy 82 going to 45. I mean, that's...we have...
Thank you.
We have raceways, we have raceways throughout the county, and, I mean, I live in Bull Domingo where the washboard is terrible, and I tell my road or my folks on the board, "Don't grade it because the washboard slows them down." So I don't get passed, I don't get passed in my patrol vehicle going home. Right? So, I mean, and I say that tongue in cheek of course. So I think we could cut through the chase. It always comes down to enforcement. It does, and I know that it does. And so we start talking about, I mean, I have nine, basically nine folks that can go out and do enforcement, and then 10, including myself. We made it about six...in the last quarter of 2016, we responded to about 1,600 calls for service. We conducted about 220 traffic stops. You start combining all that, you divide it by nine, and that comes up, there's not a lot of extra time in there to do...to do more because of resources. Now, we will have a new deputy position once we get somebody hired, which will help thin out and provide more opportunities to do that. I think we have to have the question, and I think this one's brought it up. If we don't do enforcement, the signs aren't going to make a huge difference, but it doesn't hurt. So those are my thoughts. Do we put them up? I think we have to have a good discussion and say, "Do you think that's a benefit? Is it not a benefit?"
One...now I'll get to one question I have, comes to mind. We've all traveled Copper Gulch at one time or another, and there's one hill down there, I think, that has like maybe a 15, the one that says Blind Hill. I think that's what...I mean, it has a lower speed limit, it seems like. With something like that, I mean, it's not going to slow those down going to pass, but it might keep somebody else when they come over the hill that realizes. I mean, I slow down every time I come over that hill because I'm not sure when I'll meet on the other side.
The sign's a lot cheaper than somebody getting hurt by.
Right.
Well, it's an issue.
That's the ultimate fear.
I like this lady. Did you have a comment?
Yes. The one comment that I have is, I'm the president of Quiravertie, Kristy Doll, and one comment that I have is that people out there, Sheriff Farley, you can meet 3 and 5, and every afternoon, you got UPS and you got FedEx going 55 miles an hour. And it's...and it's going up to Choctaw and Y Kegel, and it's just crazy. But one of my comments is when it does snow, if you go up Airport Road to Y Kegel, and you go up the windy road past Pogie, that's all icy because of all the shade. And if...and my dad, who lives on Vermont, and he comes over and he's like, "Chris," you know, "These people are going 55 miles an hour around this icy road." Yeah, I'm trying to do something about that, but, you know, we...Ian and I noticed this morning that there's only two signs in Quiravertie posted, and it's going in on each side, going the south and the north, but that's it, and it's 35 miles an hour. Maybe if it was posted a little bit more common, a little bit more...I don't...more intimate? I don't know. Would you have comment on that?
Well, it would be nice to maybe put a couple more signs staggered out across there because I don't think...I think people forget, or they can come in from the east and not see signs, and I...trust me, one enforcement background, I know where you're at with resources. You know, we've got Sam that lives out there, half a mile from there. As you guys get time, just have some selective enforcement out there, and we realize...
Just a little bit more...just a little bit more presence.
Let me ask you a question. She brought up two good companies. It would be nice, maybe, if you called those two companies and told them to slow their drivers down and just give them a nice polite warning that you're getting complaints.
That is very subtle.
Yeah, that would...
I think absolutely.
I understand they're in the business to make money and stuff, but...
I believe it's the best of the principles.
How many signs are you requesting? Do you have an idea, Sheriff, how many signs, if we agreed to that?
Two or three?
Just a couple more, maybe, staggered out around, you know, between...like you say, you've got one clear on the east or the northeast side of the HOA, and then one down towards the airport road where Y Kegel and Airport. Maybe if you just staggered a couple more. I totally get it, you know, people that are going to ignore signs, they ignore them, you know, but maybe...and then they can't make an argument with the sheriff. We'll pop post it in here.
I think right.
I'd like to know if a communication has been made within your HOA.
We're going to put that in our newsletter again, which goes out the 21st. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to speak for the president.
Do you meet as a whole? Do you have a meeting where you meet with your residents?
We meet on the 18th, which we can reiterate this at the end.
We meet usually the second or the third week of every month, and we post that, and we let the community know. Most of the full timers that live out there. Do we have a full presence? No. But it has been made known to our association that not everybody has internet access, so we are doing more paper routing than...
Physical.
Yes, than anything right now, just to get more, I guess, transparency.
Well, you're in my district, and we need to visit Road and Bridge some more, but I would be happy to come out as commissioner.
Please do.
And say, "Look, we've got a problem. We need you to help us solve it."
I'd be willing to drive you at 35 miles an hour. I thought about taking a video.
I try to stick with the achievable objective. Roger's got a comment. Guys, you just can't go out and throw signs up willy-nilly. There is such a thing as...that is called manual and uniform traffic control devices, MUTS. So that one there, you've got to kind of follow those regulations so that if a lawsuit comes up for a sign that's misplaced, then you can go back and say, "We put this in according to MUTS." So that's just a...just so everybody knows, you know, you can't throw a sign up over 10 feet like most people want, but...
I've seen lots of subdivisions where they post their own signs, just buy their own signs. signs and they post it. Is there any, do we have any restrictions on that? Do we mind if they did that on their own?
So, on, on actual, a lot of those subdivisions, they're all private roads, and so-
That's why.
I hate to say this on the record, but I just will. So, private roads, we're not, we don't even have jurisdictional authority to write speeding tickets on private roads. So, that's where you see a lot of those, Bull Domingos, for example, they have a lot of the speed limit signs that they've constructed themselves, not enforceable by us, unless it's crazy speeds that come under careless driving. But under, but on the county roads themselves, they have to be the Mutsa. And that's why I struggle sometimes with locations because Roger knows that stuff, because that's it. I don't, I don't, I have, I forget enough as it is, I don't need to try to confuse myself with all of those regulations. Well, I don't, I defer to Road and Bridge on the locations we go out, and he says, "Well, because of this and this." I'm like, "Okay."
I might be out of line here, but just a question, Roger, you might know. Is there a way that we can differentiate the grading of our roads to kind of make it safer for us, in a way, around those curves or anything?
We just, we can only do so much, too.
Because along, it's, they're, you know, along those really windy curves, you have people going down the hill and they're right in the middle of the road, or they're on the left-hand side, and you've got somebody coming right at you, and you're going, "Oh."
Many different conditions on that. To answer your question, there's a lot of different conditions. Dry weather is a terrible thing. It sucks.
It does, it does.
And then I've, right now, I've got two water trucks down out of three, so there's a lot of variables on why the roads don't get bladed. Can you put it on a schedule? You can, but in forty-three years I've been here, a schedule has never, ever worked. Because where you don't have enough guys, pretty soon you've got to pull one guy off of one route because the other guy does the truck. So, then you're trying, it's, you know, we'd love to be able to send one guy, one blade, a water truck, on each route. You can't do that.
I'd like to respond to your question a little bit, too. Some of the data we have that Roger's compiled shows that on some of the roads, we've had a sixty percent increase in traffic in the last eight or nine years. As a county, we have a, we have limited resources, but as we have increased traffic, we have increased demands. So, down the road, we're going to have to look at how we can handle this. Is it going to involve, and I don't, I'll say this word now, I don't, I'm not saying we're going to do it, but it might even involve an increase in the middle of it, so that we can have more equipment. Do you realize that we have, some of these graders you shoot out there are thirty years old?
Yes.
With twenty thousand hours on them? I don't think anybody's drive a car that's thirty years old.
Thank you for keeping them running.
But, these guys, you know, these guys, not as big excuse, but in their defense, I think we've reached a point where our road demands are exceeding almost our ability with the equipment and the staff that we have to meet them, so we're going to have to address that, and a longer-term option to fix that. But, again, you know, everybody comes here because they want to pay for it.
Exactly.
And the other thing is, we've got to have the resources to do it right. And I have a radio, I get to listen to these guys all the time, and I assure you, there's not many times that they aren't out there pounding the road.
Well, if there's anything that the association can do to help in this area, as far as financial or anything, I'm up to any ideas.
Well, I think you're doing it by being here, and let's be honest, the squeaky wheel kind of gets degrees at times. I mean, and it does, I mean, we do need to be reminded of that. I'll just, the last thing, Sam, my, for me, is that when I first took office, I noticed we had a lot, we were having a lot of traffic accidents, a lot of rollover accidents, and so we started looking at why those accidents were happening. And Sergeant Halpin, that was a great helper, people were going too fast, and so I started pounding on our folks with Mike's help to slow people down. And so, a lot of times, the deputies get caught up in making, making several traffic stops instead of spreading those out, and so, what do you do when you're trying to make several traffic stops? You go to the higher-density traffic areas, the highways and so forth, and so you get overlooked at times. So, I failed to remind my folks that, "Look, there's more areas than just the high, we've got to get out to more areas." So, we'll make a concerted effort to try to get somebody out there a little more often. And again, you're, by bringing it to our attention, that's what we need, I mean, to be reminded.
I really appreciate that.
What's the cost of the signs, Roger?
Approximately three hundred dollars by the time we make the sign, install the sign, maintain the sign, they run approximately three hundred dollars per sign. That's the man-hours to put the sign together, man-hours to install them, and then upkeep them.
Well, didn't we, when we were out there looking last time, didn't we notice that there was two signs that were evaporated, gone, that used to be out there there?
I'm using some kid's bedroom.
I just appreciate the attention you're giving to this.
We have an issue out there, we need to try and help with, and I would, I would recommend it. Did you have a comment? No, no, I'm sorry, I was just stretching. I think Mr. Prince wants to say something.
Yeah, the only thing I was going to say is, I think your offer to visit with your association is very generous and a great idea. Let them know we care, we're trying to do something, and maybe it'll wake them up, tell them the sheriff's involved, and maybe they'll go, "Ooh, I'm going to slow down." But, it's a difficult situation.
And I'd like to add to that, maybe your association does some sort of community watch, like they have town watches?
Right.
So, you might be able to incorporate something like that, because you are the eyes that are there.
And so, here's, here's-
You have to go through you.
So, here's one avenue you can do, and a lot of people don't understand this, but you can sign a complaint against a driver. So, let's just say, for example, that you know someone in your community that you've talked to, and they just continue to drive fast. All you have to do is identify that driver at the location, the time that they did it, up to the date, you call us.
Okay.
Say, "I want to sign a complaint against this person, eyewitness X, Y, Z." The deputy will then go out, contact that person, and write them a ticket for you. So, like normally, if we're doing speed enforcement, we see someone speeding, we write them a ticket, then if they go to court, we have to appear in court and testify what we've observed. Well, in this case, you're, we're issuing the ticket on behalf of you, so then you would go to court instead of us, and you would testify, this is what you saw. All it would take is about two of those. And the word would get around. And I'm not saying that you would have to do it, Ms. Watson, or any individual, but if all of a sudden, everyone in the community knows, "Look, we're tired of people driving crazy, and we're going to turn you in if you're driving like a fool," people slow down. It's just accountability.
We put that in there.
And a lot of people don't know that you can do that, and we try to, we try to get that around, that, "Look, because we can't be everywhere, if you help us, we will, I mean, we appreciate that."
Let's, let's wrap this up, because we've got a long agenda to go, yes?
Well, yeah, you mean the person observing? Yeah, we would, yeah, let's say that Ms. Watson observed it, she wanted to sign the complaint, then the deputy would call, talk to her, get the facts of what she saw, and she would go out, she would present that person. Because again, we're not writing on her behalf, we're writing on, it's likely to happen that she would be the one that would testify.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
Where I think we are with this, Shannon, would you or one of your, maybe Chris or somebody, go out with me when we go to, when they have a meeting, and I'll explain what we're trying to do and limitations, and you explain what they can do?
How would you like us to set that up with you, sir?
You set it up, and I'll, let me know what you're looking at, and I'll try to be-
We have a meeting, I don't know, we have a meeting on the eighteenth at-
At ten-thirty.
Ten-thirty?
Ten-thirty.
Okay. If that fits into your schedule, we can try to work here next month, but-
March eighteenth as well. Yes, March eighteenth.
A meeting on Saturday at ten-thirty? How long does this take?
We'll put you up front.
Okay. Well, the reason I'm asking is, we've got a funeral that afternoon of a young lady that's been in the community.
Yes, sir.
If that would work, Shannon, with ten o'clock?
Ten-thirty.
Or Chris?
I'll take you up. I think I'll have Chris, I'll defer to Chris on that one, only because I have a basketball game in Purple Creek that-
No, that's fine, I mean, with-
We have to leave, yeah. I don't know if we can have the bus leave.
And where do you have this meeting?
At the Querna Verde Clubhouse, and it is off Airport Road, approximately a mile and a half.
Yeah, off on the left-hand side.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is that February eighteenth?
Yes, sir.
February the eighteenth at ten o'clock.
Ten-thirty.
Ten-thirty.
I'll use that as a reminder.
Yes.
Sorry, if I'm putting it now, I'll forget it. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. We have one more to move on here, and in public health, we're late an hour, but we have the also Oak Creek grade speed limit. Is there anything, don't know anything about it? This was a request we had from a citizen?
Yeah.
Well, you were the one that brought it up, right, Shannon?
Yeah, Roger and I went out and looked at it, that's the one right there, the county where they're, Roger, it's, what it is, is that northbound, the speed limit drops to twenty-five right into there.
Thirty-five, and the other one was twenty-five?
Yeah, there was just, there was, all we're asking is to add that, and Roger and I-
So, you guys, we're settled on that?
It's done. We're just making it consistent. It was twenty-five one direction, thirty-five the other, so, thanks, Roger.
Can I ask, the reason why I came is because of the Oak Creek grade speed limit, and I just want to add that I have some of the similar complaints as the Querna Verde people do with the trucks, and the washboard conditions, and how it makes it difficult. And there's some of the speed limit signs that are not appropriate, that are higher on the grade than just where the cattle guards are. I'm guessing you're talking the first two miles?
Actually, that's not even the first two miles, it's that first-
The very first cattle guard?
No, that's, yeah.
That was that twenty-five, it was twenty-five going north and thirty-five going south, and we just-
Well, and I just want to reiterate that the trucks are not helping with the road conditions.
Are you talking the gravel trucks or the?
Both, gravel, FedEx, UPS. And I, I was going around a curve very slowly because of the bad washboard conditions, and a car went zooming around me at probably forty-five miles an hour.
If I may interject-
We write a lot of tickets on Oak Creek grade, I can tell you that much. I don't know if you've ever been stopped, probably not, because-
No.
If I may-
Because you drive slower.
If we may get back to order, please, if I may interject, we have already received a lot of input on Oak Creek grade, and that is one of the areas that we're looking at, how can we fix it, how can we make it better in the long term? And I think it's fairly safe to say that that's been on your radar.
Keeping the trucks going slower will help because then the road will be damaged so easily, so quickly.
Well, again, we're back to the enforcement issue. Or you can do exactly what he said, you, you contact them, you file a complaint on them, and pursue it.
Yeah.
I mean, it's sometimes uncomfortable, but that is, one or two of those will, will also make an issue. But, we are, that, I assure you, that Oak Creek grade is one of the roads that we're going to be looking at. Okay, I don't mean to rule that we've got a long ways to go here, I think we've covered this. At this time, I would entertain a motion that we go into executive session.
I'll make the motion to go into executive session with regards to an employee matter.
Is there a second?
I second.
The move in a second, if we go into the executive session, and let me read the right language. Commissioner Hood made a motion, seconded by Commissioner Prince, go into executive session, citing Colorado by statute twenty-four, six, four oh two regarding personnel. I will now adjourn, oh, let's see, did we vote on it? We did.
We didn't. No, I need the nurse.
Did we both? All in favor, say aye. Same, no, same sign? Motion carried. And we would like, Roger?
Not the way it was described.
I'm sorry for the delay.
No worries. Do you need a break, or are you okay to go?
Keep on going.
Am I next?
I, and I attest that I'm the chairperson of the Custer County Board of Commissioners, and confirm that the discussion remained on topic, and no matters were adopted, no actions or decisions were made.
As county attorney, I'll certify, that's a correct statement.
All right. Hey, thank you.
Donna.
Kelly.
What are you?
I went through your report.
Okay, which I have copies if you need them.
And I don't have any, any questions, I guess, unless my colleagues here.
You good, Donna?
I'm okay, thank you.
Okay, so, if, if you want me to emphasize anything, I will. Just to let you know, we do a flu, that was a big one, because we hadn't had it, and now it's confirmed here, so it's going to be late season, it looks like. I had, I have three additional things, because I know your time is tight. One is that I have contracts with me, and you may have gotten an additional email that said this one contract, the immunization court contract, they have to do, they have to make a change. It's really a minor change. It's going, it's saying that we're going to get our payments-
This is a intergovernmental contract.
No, no, this is the immunization court contract. They're spreading, they're adding an extra quarter, and so the payments will be in five payments instead of four. So, I can't have you sign this today because they haven't resent us the new contract. But, that is the only change. So, my question is, can we bring this over, Bob, for your signature when the new one comes without having to wait for, because I think they want it sooner than a month.
This is a four-page contract?
This is the immunization services.
Yeah, my front, my front page says-
Call the Department of Public Health and Environment, D C E E D I M M.
Got it, okay. As counsel, had a chance to look at this yet?
I did, and I don't have any problem with it. I recommend that you sign it, or that you, the board approve that you sign it as soon as you can get the final warrant.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to, tends to be approved this, with the change that is adding an extra quarter, you said?
Right, it, it'll just, it'll just be approved with the change that the state sends, which, and that is all it is really doing, is it, they're funding it for an additional quarter, so they-
So, there's five quarters, right?
So, they wrote it wrong, is what it says. They made a mistake. I know that doesn't ever happen to you guys.
Okay, does that-
Then the master contract.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion, we approve the Department of Agency number F A A A Task Force Agreement and Routing Number one F, one seven, F H H A nine six seven six two, with the modification that you are suggesting changing from four quarters to five quarters. I recommend that we approve that with the change.
I'll second that. Motion is stated.
The move is accepted, do we have some discussion on this?
Just one question, if I may, please. Is there anything, I mean, I read it, and it was kind of like, you know, was it, are you, you're comfortable with it?
Well, as, as far as what I know.
This is what the state sends, and it's basically signed or else.
It's, it's, it's to, it's to give us the, or to pass through those funds, however that works, so that we can do our immunization program, that we, and we meet all the requirements, we do everything the way we're supposed to do them. That's what I would reassure you about.
I'm fine, I just want to make sure you're okay.
Sure, sure, sure.
And then we had another one.
The master contract, I don't know, oh.
I thought we did.
We didn't.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same saying? Motion carried.
I wish I could tell you more about the intergovernor, intergovernmental master contract. From what I understand about it is, this is not one that comes with money. This just is saying that all the other grants that we do get, that, that, that the Custer County Public Health Agency is given the authority to oversee them. So, this is just our, our main thing, that we are an agency, and I wanted to point that out because when I was looking at the, whatever you posted for the position, and when I, just when talking to people, everyone says, "Do we have a county nurse yet? Do we have a..." Well, what I just want to reiterate is that at some point during Donna's tenure, we went from being a public health agency nurse- nursing service to being a public health agency. And I don't know what all changed under being an agency. I'm not really privy to that. But just make sure, what it does mean is that when you hire a director, they don't have to be a nurse. Now, in a county this size, my recommendation is, I think you need a nurse, I think they're your best person, but it doesn't have to be. You can get a master's in public health, you can get a physician, you can get anybody you can afford to get. But the agency had other things under it besides nursing services. So this contract then lets us do all those things, and some of them are things that we have to do, that we're mandated to do, like the child fatality team. And then there's other things under this that, you know, we can do. There's always, they always like us to do more than we have the capacity to do, but I don't think there's any, I mean, I think it has to be signed for us to function.
This is another one of those that the state says here, sign this.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Yeah, because the governor's name is on it.
And to add to that, we did make a point, I'm sure you and I talked about agency, and I believe our position description contained agency.
Okay, okay.
Because you and I made those corrections.
Yeah, we did make those corrections. But you just have to be careful when you're talking about it, that it's, you're not really hiring a county nurse, you're hiring a director for the public health agency, and then who?
And that's-
That I'm not, like I said.
And that's how we described it.
My bias would be that, I hope it's a nurse, but that's totally up to you guys and who you find. So anyway, if you can do this one, Bob, because you are the chairman, it's blue ink, and it's three copies.
This is ready to be signed?
It's ready to be signed.
I'll make the motion that we approve the intergovernmental master contract, CMS routing number 18 FAA0012.
I'll second the motion stated.
All right, any discussion? If the move is seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? Motion carries. Okay, what's next?
I mentioned on here, under community outreach, that Lynette Byerly took time off from her job to teach a first aid CPR AED class to a local outfitter. And, you know, when Gail did CPR for our community, she never charged a fee because, except for the $5 to get the card, because she was being paid, and this was part of her job to do this outreach. Well, I'm not certified in CPR instruction, and I wouldn't have the time, even if I was. And when I spoke with Lynette, I got the feeling that she did this one time as a favor to Gail, really, because that Gail couldn't fit this outfitter in before she left. But we've already had other calls. We had a call from Paint of View, we had a call from Valley, we had other, they're already saying, "When can we get in? When can we get in?" And I say, "I don't really have a CPR person." So I didn't know if, and I haven't talked to Lynette, I don't know what she would want, but I didn't know if there was a way to pay her for her time, or whether we can look around for another instructor, or whether we just have to tell the community, "You're going to have to pay whatever a private instructor wants until we get someone." And I'm just, because I'm not really in charge here, I'm just asking your opinion.
Is there money in your budget for this?
Um, well, not specifically. I mean, you know, I'm-
I'm just trying to, when we've done the core CPR and first aid, it's at least two hours of time usually in the afternoon.
Yeah, yeah, some, yeah.
Could go to three.
Question about budget. Do you have budget if you paid someone to do?
Well, obviously, it wasn't written into the budget.
I get that, but you have general funds.
But if we're not paying a director right now, this-
The whole picture is that we're saving salary right now.
Yeah, right now, you're not paying a director. So obviously, you know, you would have a few hours worth of money to, unless, I mean, obviously, what if you have to pay a director a whole lot more than what you were paying, and you might want that money? I don't want to, you know.
So are you saying that with the new position, you would prefer that the new position, the director, take on the CPR, first aid in a nutshell?
I would think it would be a valuable service to the community. And if whoever you are interviewing doesn't have that, you know, if you say, as part of your job, as soon as you get here, you go take the instructor course, become an instructor, we're going to say that's a part of your position, you know. I think it's valuable to the county. We have all these outfitters, we have all these people who do things that they need to have this.
I think CPR training is almost mandatory. We know that we recently learned that our rural bridge personnel have had CPR training.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I think the new health agency director, is that the right term for the position?
Public health agency director, yep, yep, yep.
Will come in with their hands just overloaded with things to do that have been kind of waiting and hanging up. I would like to know how much the lady you just mentioned would charge to do this.
Okay.
And assuming it's reasonable, I would most likely be in favor of hiring her to do the CPR training that's necessary from the different agencies or entities that are asking for it. This is my personal opinion.
As an interim, until the director's hired?
Until the director's hired, and then the director can make whatever decision the director feels.
I think I would prefer the language contracting instead of hiring. We're hiring benefits and stuff, too, and this is-
Well, could they just be a vendor?
Yeah.
They could just be vendor. They don't need a contract.
No.
But as opposed to them saying, here, you, 10 people need to each give me $20, they would bill the county.
Right.
They would bill the county. We would hire them for that particular service, for that particular time. But let's find out before we-
Sure, sure. I'll be happy to talk to her.
We're talking a thousand dollars, that kind of thing.
Right, right. I'll be happy to talk to her and-
Thank you very much.
Can I just email you, whatever I find out?
Email all three of us.
Yes.
Okay. And if you know of anyone else-
Email Brendan Chink, send them to us.
Who's certified in the, you know, let me know, I'll call, I'll talk to them. I just don't.
No, I just know that we need to-
I wonder if anybody's a fire department certified?
As an instructor? I don't know.
I mean, I'm trying to think of what agency it might be.
Right, 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 right. Yeah.
It's a good service.
I could call them.
We need to do it.
Okay, okay. So, thank you for this. If you don't have any questions, I won't take up more of your time. You can see we're busy, and we're going to be busy. We're going to keep being busy. The Five Health Fair, they're calling it that now in Southern Colorado instead of Nine Health. We are well on our way to organizing that, but it is a big undertaking. And-
Why did it go from nine to five?
Well, because it was Channel 9 in Denver, and it's still there under that big umbrella. So you'll see signage both ways here, but they're trying in Southern Colorado to emphasize Channel 5, because of course-
It's their sister station.
They, and they supply a lot of the money, so they want the-
Okay, the recognition?
The recognition, exactly, exactly. Okay.
We haven't determined a ship, and I talked to you about being on the search and screen committee.
Okay.
And we've talked briefly among ourselves, but we will be identifying a committee and letting you know.
Okay, wonderful. And are you advertising?
It's going out, it's in the papers this coming week.
But it's also statewide.
Local papers and statewide.
Yes.
Okay, okay, all right. Well, I'd be hoping for somebody wonderful.
I love this. I promise you, thank you so much.
Okay, I know you will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a bunch.
Thanks.
We'll see ya. Maybe next month.
Mr. Chairman, can I request a five-minute break? You asked me to ask that.
Recession, five minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, next is the- Oh, yeah?
Yep.
I will declare the Board of County Commissioners reconvene at 11:38. Next item on business is emergency menus before. And for the record, I would like our guests to introduce themselves again. What we do here is we have your name down, I mean, your name and your voice, so then when she gets ready to write something up, she can ascertain who we're talking with. Paul?
Oh, yeah, Paul Sage, with the Custer County Board and Sheriff's Fringe.
Kate Spinelli with San Isabel Land Protection Trust.
Ben?
Ben Lynn, San Isabel Land Protection Trust, but today representing the Custer County Conservation District.
Okay, thank you. It's all yours.
It's all mine? Okay. I submitted my written report. A couple things changed since then, but one thing I forgot to put on there was PILT funds, so at some point here-
What times?
The PILT funds, the Tier 2 PILT funds, which are the, they can only be spent on the fire mitigation. And then FEMA midday Monday finally gave us the approval on the all-hazard plan, so we had a resolution on the agenda as part of the OEM report, and Brenda's working on that and tweaking it, but Silvercliff and Westcliff have both adopted their resolutions, and if we can get ours done, I'll get it all to the state. The deadline on the grants march first, and I'll start the closeout.
I'm going to stop for just a second.
Okay.
We're going to get a little bit later to the protection project, but didn't we have another letter, something that we need to, or report that we need to get out by Freddie or to Dola or to somebody?
Well, there's several things going on. I've got one-
Okay, as we go through, be sure that we get-
Yeah, yeah, we want to talk about the soil conservation and sponsoring the emergency water watershed protection grant, emergency funding to Dola, Christie Culp. I drafted one that needs to come from the county commissioners.
And I think it's, I only had very minor change in it.
Okay, and that's-
I want to make sure we bring that forward today.
Yeah, I would like, if you're ready to move forward on that, I would like to be ready, and then-
The sooner the better on that one.
Well, yeah, because that one I did-
Okay, we'll go on, and we, you can tell them-
Yeah, we can come back, yeah. And then the third piece will be the, talking about the request to the state for a shared position for recovery and mitigation. So, but-
Okay, please continue.
Okay. Well, I think, you know, I brought up, I closed out the 2014 grant, the 2015 grant. I'm still waiting on reimbursement for the vehicle, and then I'm going to ask for a grant change for the $3,500 in 2015 to do signal boosters and some incident command boards for Shannon. And then 2016, I don't have the final numbers, but we've got $10,000 for some mobile scene lighting. John Decker is coordinating with the Sheriff's Office on that grant request. And then I think we've got $3,500 for CERT in 2016. So the grants kind of always run about a year behind, because by the time I get approval from the state, it's like in October, and then, so I get it in my funding for this year. So the 2016 grant is really in my 2017 budget, and then the 2017 Homeland Security grants are going in now, the request to the South Region. So we'll, as a region, we'll look at what we want to do in the March meeting, and then that'll take till about October to get approved, and then we'll come forward and have that money in 2018.
We're done with Tetra Tech?
Tetra Tech, everything is in, all those, they finally, I attached it, the page on my online grants. Everything finally went to the state supervisor. That first amount of $7389, it's over a year now, because I think, well, right at, because it was one of the first things I did the first month. Everything got hung up moving forward. I'm not sure why, but I think in part because they wanted it to be submitted to the state. So everything went, I was on workflow step one, just waiting, and everything finally started moving forward quickly. I think as soon as we get these resolutions in, they're ready to cut a payment on that. We're going to get the $43,750 back. The other kind is an in-kind match. Westcliff gave us close to $800, and Silvercliff should be giving us about $300. So that last number, the $73951, that's all that was eligible as an in-kind match. So everything else was hard cash spent to Tetra Tech. The $73951 was, are eligible. And so the cost to the county out of pocket on this project ended up being about six grand.
And that was in the budget.
Yeah, and so, yeah, so as soon as we get the resolutions incorporated, the plan gets finalized, because the final FEMA plan includes that all three entities adopted it. And then I'll own the plan, I'll own the source documentation. We're planning on printing about five copies, so that Silvercliff, Westcliff, probably Jackie's office, my office, the library have a hard copy, and then it'll be available online as a PDF file, but it's 500 pages. And then we'll start doing annual updates. Westcliff Paul Wenke brought one up last night, and I did talk to one of the state guys, and he said that he thought that was in the THIRA and not the, because it's not a, we were talking about prairie dogs and public health issue, but we'll see if we can at least maybe address that in there on the, on the annual updates.
Who is Tetra Tech?
Tetra Tech is the vendor that the selection committee selected to write the plan.
I think you were in a meeting or two, we may have had down at the bowling alley. We had Lady commit as a facilitator, or Lady Brankwell. It was advertised throughout the community as a major meeting, a lot of people did attend, and that was where we had the community.
So they had to, they had to go through an RFP process, and I think they actually sent the proposal out to about 20 different vendors and only got three submissions back. And then, then there was a selection committee, and this was all before my time, but the selection committee chose Tetra Tech. And Tetra Tech's a woman-owned business. The one red flag I did get from the state was they didn't feel like the women and minority business stuff was documented properly, and there were only, you know, three people that put bids in, and they went with the women, so there's a small chance of an audit to the county. And she just said, you know, "I want you to know this," and I went through all the documentation, there's nothing I can go back and change differently, but it's good to note that on all these things, there's a very finite process of crossing Ts and dotting Is to cover yourself.
And this document is a very large, comprehensive document.
494 pages.
Yeah, and I actually read the whole thing.
Oh, yes.
Well, but it's-
I reviewed it.
It's one of those things that we needed to do, and we-
Yeah. And I think one of the good things, well, I'm happy to have it done, almost done. I think one of the really good things time-wise, as we move into recovery and asking for some of these funding, we've got this thing done, because without having it done, it might hurt our eligibility.
Cindy, I apologize for asking this, but I slept last night. I know you told us there was some change you were going to make in that document, and I forgot what-
I would like to put something about Hardscrabble Creek and the potential for flooding, because I went through the flood section.
That's what it was.
And when you go into those very detailed, there's nothing about flooding down 96 at all.
Are you able to do that?
Not in the initial document, it'll have to be in the first year. It'll have to be in the, yeah, so we have, we're required to make annual updates and meet as a committee, so I think-
It might be a good thing, considering we don't know what's ahead of us as far as flooding goes, to anticipate our outcomes.
Yeah.
Well, the thing being, if it were in here, though, it may qualify for some additional funding. It would qualify for now because we haven't identified it.
Yeah, you know, and I mean, once we have the Army Corps hydrology reports, I think that'll give us a lot more teeth to add it in here, that, you know, it didn't come in because the vendor did it based on, you know, and we don't have some of the flood mapping that other communities would, so. But I did go back and look through the flood section.
Are you ready for a motion, Ms. Howard?
Hmm?
Are you ready for a motion, Ms. Howard?
Oh, I'm ready, your resolution? No, I'm ready, Jim. Counsel, are you ready?
It looks okay.
Have you read it, Donna? Okay, I will entertain a motion for Resolution Number 1704.
Make a motion that we approve Resolution 1704, which is the Custer County Hazardous Mitigation Plan as submitted, with Ms. Howard.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? Motion carries. Is this the one you want me to sign?
Aye.
I'm asking Brenda.
Yeah, you can sign that one.
Okay.
And then if you'll scan it and email it to me?
Sure.
I'll get Silvercliff's and get everything to the state. I'll get Silvercliff's and get everything to the state.
Has Silvercliff already approved this, have they not?
They did Monday night, yeah. I'm three for three.
I just went through the executive summary scan, but it's just...
Next.
Next, I'm skipping Tetra Tech. Waiting on my fourth quarter EMPG. Everything else was approved on the 2017 work plan. Emergency Management Program Grant. I'm speaking acronies. The...I invited you to look at the MOU of Custer County Schools, and I have not...I had such a crazy week last week, I have not looked at the comments.
We're going to have changes from the school on it.
Yeah, and I think their meeting might be this week, so, yeah, so...
Just to let you know, when I tried to look at it, I could not.
You couldn't get into it?
I couldn't, I couldn't.
You couldn't get into it either?
No, I think I sent you an email on that, because I could...
Maybe Monty has to invite everybody now that he tweaked it. Okay, I'll see what I can do and try to get back in there. Do you know when their board meeting is, Brenda?
Um, I think it is the 14th.
Okay, so we've got a little time. And then the coop I need to get on is a Google Doc. It says in here it is, but it's not on there yet either, so...Meredith Nichols is looking to come in as, you know, I have $6,000 budgeted for contract labor, and she'll be graduating May 5th, she'll be back from Nicaragua in April, and we're looking at bringing her in at...she doesn't go back to graduate school till next January, so...
Six months?
Yeah, we're looking at starting her maybe in April or May, and contract labor 20 hours a week.
Do you know who she is?
Later last year. She's...her folks run the chop shop down there, whatever it's called now, the High Elevations...
Elevations.
Yeah, Meredith Nichols.
Wonderful place, by the way. Not commercial, at least.
Yeah, I didn't know her personally, I just knew of her.
Yeah, she just popped in out of the blue last summer and started volunteering, and she's got a lot of training.
She's also...her major is emergency...
International emergency.
Emergencies or something, so she has the technical training to really be an asset to us.
She's got Meredith Nichols.
It's here.
Yeah, so, yeah, I can coordinate with Donna, but I'd like her to really work on some of the evacuation planning and some of the priorities, but she's really good at Google Docs, so she's...but she's done a lot of planning, she's done a lot of first...Red Cross First Aid, and we did, she and I did talk at length, if there is an emergency, then she would like to, and I don't know how we would deal with that under the contract, but she wants to volunteer above and beyond her 20 hours a week, if, you know, if we were to have another event and she needed to pull a long week and work in...
Yeah, you're good on your resume.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and then she'll be going back on her master's degree, so...
Delwood List, Delwood List.
Delwood? I met with him at the clinic, just trying to get him engaged and involved, so he did right after our meeting. We talked about several things, and he showed up to my next CES meeting, he showed up to the E-911 Authority Meeting, and so he's been more engaged than I've seen him in the last year, and so that was good, maybe that reaching out, but that was just a plan. I said, you know, "New year, Delwood, let's start fresh and sit down and talk," so we did that. I went to the...I was the only one at the re-tack meeting this quarter, there's quite a few things going on there.
Okay.
And then, yeah, then really, since then, I've been eating and sleeping in the recovery mode. Spent three days in Wetmore last week, touring the fire, working with Coco and Cusp and Mike Schwab, who is the State Recovery Officer, and Bob was down, and then Bob and I met, I think, Thursday last week for a couple hours, and Mike has a meeting, which is...it's a smaller group, the big recovery meetings are monthly after the Homeland Security meetings, so the next one coming up is March 9th, but we're hitting some hard deadlines, and so Mike has a recovery meeting Monday for some of us. And out of where we're sort of at, at this point, you know, we looked at pretty much from 387 down to Wetmore, and with the old burn, the old trees that are coming down, some of the debris in the creek, some of the fencing across the creek, anything that'll float from cords of wood to appliances to, you know, a number of foot bridges, undersized culverts, we've got a potential impending disaster through Greenwood and Wetmore. And so we're trying to get some priorities there, which include some sort of immediate action that may not find any funding except for volunteers, and I'm not sure...I've got to call into Dennis Page to see if I can do anything with Pilt, but I don't think I can, is going to be my guess. And then, based on Mike's request and talking to Bob, I drafted, so you've got the letter to Kristi Kulp. I also drafted a letter to Mike Schwab, and I'm gonna...this hasn't gone to...I'll give you guys the ones, the red ones, this is...the red is what Mike suggested I change, but the idea, one of the things the state could fund was a full-time recovery and mitigation specialist for two years, and Mike initially asked me if I would consider sharing that position with Fremont County, and then he asked me to consider bringing Pueblo County in, and I told him, you know, I'd compromise, and that our concerns with making it a three-county staffed position was that Pueblo has a lot of resources that Fremont and I don't. Steve Morrissey is one manager, and I'm on my own, and we've got the two biggest fires, you know, 16,000 plus and 18,000 plus, and both having issues, so the idea behind this funding request, this one could come for me just as a letter, that we're asking the state for $180,000 to fund a position for two years that would assist both Steve, basically take the lead, and work recovery projects, and CWPPs and actual green timber projects, mitigation projects.
The one change I have on this is adding Middle Heart Pueblo.
Adding Middle?
You say North Heart...
Well, the reason I don't...didn't put Middle in was because the final report on Junkins doesn't address Middle as a watershed, so I know it's there, but it wasn't in the Bear Team Report, they didn't address it, so I just left it.
That's fine.
I just copied and pasted their wording, because I'd actually written Middle to begin with, and I don't know why it wasn't in there, but, you know, I can do it if you want.
This is something we've talked about for a while, and it's something that would give us some help without costing us anything.
Now, if we put this request to Mike the way it's written, it's written that Custer County would sponsor the position with an intergovernmental agreement with Fremont County. I've talked to Steve about it, he hasn't seen this draft yet, I wanted to bring it by you, and I told Steve, or Ben told Steve, we just talked to him, that it's coming to him shortly, but the idea, you know, being that it would be between the two counties and nobody sees an issue that anybody's going to want to turn it down. My thought is if we can have this person here physically, then that's a win-win for us, but that also means we have to manage the position, so there's an impact on HR finance, and I, again, I was going to talk to Paul Branson in Lovita, because this is how he was funded, and he's got one year left in his project, but to get the specifics on job description and if it's contract labor and how Orfino County is managing it, because I'm assuming it's a contract labor position.
I was going to say, if it's not contract, are you looking at benefits on top of that?
Well, it's 90,000 a year, so it's 180 for two years, so that would include benefits.
I'm curious to know what that is, if that's going to encompass benefits.
Yeah, and it's...we started out with a figure of 140, and Mike said to up it, so, yeah, so if it's contract labor, then they're going to have to buy their own benefits, yeah. But that...what I want to do is some pull...I don't want to reinvent the wheel, I want to see what Orfino County did, and then we'd have time to put it together. And the other thing, and I wrote it as 24 months, because I don't know when Lovitas was funded, if it's a fiscal year, if it's the state's fiscal year, which would be like July 1st, but Mike Schwab felt like this was something that would be a high priority on the state side to fund, as opposed to funding projects.
Am I reading true, is there any downside to this?
I don't think so.
What am I missing here?
I don't think there's a downside, so I'm, you know, I'll submit it and see what happens. I'll run it by Steve.
I think there's two things I want to comment on. First of all, Donna, I think if this goes forward and we're funded, then I think we need to set down a new budget, because out of that 90,000, it'll involve travel, it'll involve meetings, it'll involve a lot of things.
You're just going for the guns, though.
And we haven't figured out where to put their office, but, yeah, I mean, if we need $300 a month for an office and a phone line, and, yeah...
If we get the money, well, then we'll find out from that one.
I think that's a...
Because we don't know what we're going to have for dollars.
And the Orfino County position doesn't have an intergovernmental agreement, so, you know, we'll have to work that side of it, too, but I think it's doable, and I don't think that they would be opposed to any part of it, and if they are, I'm welcome to keep, you know, I'm willing to keep them here to myself. That's kind of why I want to initiate the request rather than Steve.
There's another plus to this, I think, is that Cindy's worked very closely with OEM from Fremont, got a good working relationship, supporting each other and so forth, so I think it will be a win-win opportunity. The other question I had in going to here, I see nothing that I see red flags, but I'm wondering one of two things, either that we draft a letter of support for this request, or we announce a resolution for support for this request. Would either of those help you?
Wouldn't hurt.
What do you think?
This is something I definitely...
I think a letter of support, but I don't think you need a resolution.
Okay. And I will see Mike Monday, so...
A support makes good sense to me, that we wholeheartedly support this.
And that you're willing to sponsor, you know, the position, and that would be great, because then I could attach that, I could put that as an attachment here, and I'll see, you know, and make it a 10:00 AM Monday official. I'll email it to him before then.
Is it going to have a fancy name?
Nope.
Position?
Oh, well, the way Mike was talking about it, it's a All-Hazard Mitigation and Recovery Specialist for Custer and Fremont Counties, so, yeah. Do you want an acronym for that?
No, no, that one's a...
Yeah, I don't know, all these positions have big, mouthy titles, don't they?
I would like to have permission, I guess, from you folks, if we maybe have Cindy draft a letter, we'll send it to you, and that I have the authority to sign it, so we can get it out as soon as possible. Would that be comfortable?
I'm fine with that, or if you want...
You want me to draft it, or Brenda, or...
All three commissioners are, or you just want the chair? It doesn't matter to me, I mean, I just want to support you.
Why don't you draft, you and Brenda get together, and then give me a holler, and I'll...
I'll sign.
If you guys want to come in and sign, that's fine, I want to get it out.
Yeah, I think all three will be signing it as...
More support.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's triple it, so, yeah.
All right.
Good.
And then the Emergency Grant Request Memorandum would come from you, that's the one to Kristi Kulp. I just sent this to Mike and told him if he sees any red flags in there to let me know, but that one is DOLA funding, DOLA Emergency Funds Request, and that would be for stream gauges and rain gauges, and we were looking...
Did you hand me that, another copy?
That's the one I emailed Friday, I don't think...
I know, I don't.
I'm more than willing to pass this around, I don't have a bunch of copies. I emailed that Friday, it's, so Kristi Kulp at the January recovery meeting said that there's funding available, and it's something...
Would you copy it, please?
Pueblo County.
This is one of those deals that we've got to get in line. The line's already formed, and we had to be there yesterday.
And I don't think...I don't think Fremont County put in for that, because they put in through the state for that emergency funding, so we can go straight to Kristi. I'm asking for the whole 200,000, that's a...and my understanding is that has to come as a memo from the commissioners, it has to...that I don't believe there's a match at all, because it's...there are other DOLA matches in there, are the Mineral Impact stuff is 50/50. This emergency funding, there is some stuff in that email I put Friday about they want some specifics on county financials, so I think you're probably going to have to tweak the letter to say, because we...
And this is DOLA?
Yeah.
Because they already have our specifics for other grants that we may see.
Then maybe...
Yeah, they've got that.
Then maybe, and Kristi said just start with a...Kristi Kulp said just start with a memo, so I can get the ball rolling, and Bob and I had discussed last week that maybe get this letter off to her, get the conversation going, and then get her at a commissioners' meeting with a face-to-face and say, "What can we do?" So what I did was I drafted that for the whole 200,000, and threw 28,200 above the hardware towards a medi...creek mitigation, and one, I don't know if that funding would be soon enough, two, I don't know if she would cover that as an emergency, but I see it, you know, we've got to head off a pretty messy situation down there, so we might as well ask and get that conversation going.
If we bring her in, it could be twofold with regards to the fiber, because she wants to be part of that also.
Well, I'm invited, Kristi needs to come down.
Yeah.
And some other grants that we've got that we need to finish up on, we've got the courthouse evaluation on my DOLA grant.
So the piece I was missing, the capital costs came straight from Mike Schwab, and those are off the capital costs for Fremont County. There's no...there's no costs in there for like what the Army Corps, what the actual operating and maintenance costs are going to be, because Mike said that even...this is off, based off what Fremont County had through the state emergency funding request, and Mike said they're not going to fund all that other stuff, because Morrissey had put in for like almost half a million dollars for funding this thing for five or 10 years, so that's just capital costs, and so we'd have to look somewhere else for the ongoing costs, but there's National Weather Service, there's Army Corps of Engineers, and, you know, it's a...Mike said just start there, and then...
But this is critical, that we have some way of an early warning system off the top of the burn, and we have at least some type of a flood gauge at the bridge on North Creek. Those are two, I think, are critical issues.
And then, and I know when we were doing the tour, Teresa was talking about putting the warning at South Hardscrabble by Bill Donleys, but the other one, if there's water coming down from North Hardscrabble, part of, and I don't think I...I'll email you that copy, too, but...
See, part of it's going to be CDOT, because North Hardscrabble is mostly CDOT's problem, but once it hits the Smith subdivision, then we have a channel that's plugged up just like we have on the main stem of Hardscrabble, and there's places that's fairly shallow. It can come across short, it might not, but the opportunity is there, and it widens out just a little bit below that viewing area, but there's some beaver dams in there, and again, depending on a debris dam.
And the position that the group working last week took, and we did have a forest-serviced hydrologist with us on Tuesday, they decided that McKenzie Junction and Smith Creek subdivision, that the comments here are wait for judgment until the US Army Corps of Engineers looks at it, and that's the hydrology. The problem with that is we're not going to get that till, they say, late April or late May, so we might get it in August, I don't know when we're going to get that, but I know Fremont County still does not have their Army Corps hydrology final, so, you know, and they were a July fire, so, you know, but we know that South Creek is going to be bad, and then South Creek will actually hit below 387, because it kind of comes down that side canyon and hits on the Greenwood Road, but we know that that's got a potential to be bad, and we know we need to start looking to clean that up before the spring runoffs, so that's where we run into some issues down there, and Paul Sage is willing to help with some of that stuff. We're looking at some swift crews, we're trying to find some emergency funding to do that.
Did you bring that up to the VSO yesterday to help down there?
I asked him, what do you know about the, the, I want to say, re-tack, it wasn't re-tack, but the military team, what was it called?
Ribicon.
Ribicon. And he didn't know a whole lot about it, but I talked to him, we talked also briefly about getting veterans to help veterans if there's any down there. Paul did a nice job the other day when we were meeting, he joined us, and as I reported yesterday, identified several agencies that potentially can help us.
And, you know, one thing we talked about when we were down there is the basement of the community center, is we changed the wording in the, in the tour to a... Yeah, it's basically an inundation area, we're not calling it a flood plain, but I think you need to look, I think you need to be proactive and look at some engineering and maybe some sort of...these are more like a trap bag.
Do you have any idea what those cost?
No, I'm going to try to get a price, but it's...we did take a generic look at it, and it's in a real nice area where the floodwaters, if they hit, could rise out into the basketball court and playground and... out into the basketball court and playground and still be rerouted back to the creek right at the bridge, um, to protect the community center. You might have to go out there to , uh, Draper's property where Ruth Roper lives and get a little further down that side. What, for the Monday meeting, I wanna accomplish a couple of things. And one is gonna be, um, the Army Corps will be there. I wanna get the community meeting established, and then I wanna get the sandbag training, um, set. And it sounds like from Ruth, the community center is gonna be pushed out into like April. But we were initially talking about doing sandbag training up at the Wetmore Fire Station, and they will, the Army Corps will leave us like five thousand empty sandbags as part of the training. And, uh, the community center down there might be a better place to have sand and sandbags.
The thing I'm thinking is if we have a flooding situation, the fire station will never be inundated.
Yeah.
And we might have, potentially, we could get a ton of water. We need more bags and stuff, but we can't get in to it at the community center.
Yeah. And I think they're probably okay with wherever we decide to do it.
We're getting too deep in this, but as a, as a side, I spent, I toured that area again with, um, with Larry Haynes a couple days ago. And I think if we put much of a barrier along the community building, you'll be fine, because it's gonna shift, I think the water, the water will never go over the bridge, I don't think. It's gonna wash out to the east through those homes. It's gonna cross the road right there in front of the old general store, and then drop in behind that cement building and go back to the creek. As we were looking at elevations and stuff, for that, so.
Yeah.
I think we're, I think we're right on time.
And I think, you know, the only thing that I'm missing on this, and, and Brenda could tweak this for you guys, is the, the private property within the floodplain and, and the assessed values, the stuff in red that's struck out there, and I guess you don't have it, but it's just struck out in black. Those are off of the Fremont County report. And, um, I don't know what we're looking at for properties. Ruth Roper's willing to help, but I think we need to maybe talk to JD and talk to.
We need to get this info from.
Chuck and JD.
From, uh, maybe, you know, Chuck or JD.
Yeah. And then I know Teresa with Coco is, um, looking at, um, protecting the emergency watershed, protecting wells and septics, and everybody's well there is in the creek. A lot of them, like Jim Littles, is across the road in the creek. And septics are, uh, pretty close to the wells, and it's, and I think there's, you know, I think there's gonna be some issues down there if we get hit. So, but a lot, you know, the, the one thing we have an opportunity to do ahead of time is to clean the debris out of the creek, get rid of some of the fences, make sure they're gonna rip apart easy and get out of the way. And then, uh, maybe sandbag and, you know, especially from a county level, look at what you need to do with the community center.
Well, I think the other thing we need to do, and maybe, I'm gonna ask Jackie part of this. Jackie, uh, we need to identify where we, now, the Wetmore, where we have wells, and where we have the, uh, potentially sewer facilities, leach lines at risk. Is there any way there that you could help us? So if you have any data, anything you might be able to help us with?
Yeah, the problem with Wetmore, it's pre-zoning, and she's correct. Um, Wetmore's wells are not good, as we all know.
But what I wanna do is.
And so the wells are, and the septic is usually, but I can identify most of the septics. I have no problem.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, if we have some, we don't have a record here, we can go down, maybe you can help us.
Uh-huh. Um, if you give me from point A to point B.
And there is.
A map of what you need identified, I'll do my best.
Okay. And, and Coco, um, their GIS person is Kat, and she's been working with Chuck on a lot of the data. We just don't have some of it together yet, but we are gonna at least try to get him hand-drawn into the maps, so she can start building it all into her GIS information. So I'll, I'll ask Chuck to print a map, then we can just start counting, marking houses, marking wells, marking septics, and, and then get some assessed values, so we can get this ready to go.
Cause yeah, like, in some cases, I was the one yesterday, there were ladies, well is actually in front of her house beside the roof. Behind the house in the creek, she's, her grandkids have built a, a, a clay house out of branches and debris and tin and.
Oh, yeah.
Looks like an Apache wiki.
There, there's some folks that have cut, cut their branches and thrown them into the creek, so there's piles of flash in the creek. I mean, and all that has to come out.
Do you get beavers, Brenda?
Huh?
Beavers?
Two-legged beavers. Uh, I would like to, if you had, both have had a chance to look at this letter, could we take some action on it possibly?
Well, it's not.
Or do you want to look one more?
It, I really just need to tweak these values. Um, and I can probably spend the next couple of days doing that, so we can get that. Uh, oh, and then the Wetmore Community Center, I had put on page two, add an assessed value for that. And I know typically, there's no values on government buildings, but.
Well, I'm thinking seven hundred and fifty thousand, because that's our renovation, it says renovation costs are.
Yeah. Well, then that's what I was thinking is, uh, I, I actually thought it was more than that, so I thought the grant was like a million five. It's seven fifty? Okay. Alright. So I can tweak those, and then yeah, if, um, we can tweak that and the same thing, get Brenda to print it on a county letterhead, and if you have, have the authority to sign it and send it off. And then maybe a phone call to Christie saying, here you go, can we sit down?
Do you want a copy of this, sent to you, and then you give me a call, or do my, go ahead and.
You know, if, if it's just minor changes you're gonna make, putting in numbers and stuff.
That's all it is, yeah.
I'm fine with it the way it is. I read it, and I'm, I have no issues with it, so.
Okay.
If we could do this like the last one, go ahead and approve it.
Give my here a motion to approve the emergency grant request moratorium to the Colorado Department of Local Affairs.
I'll make the motion, uh, with revisions as needed.
Just second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the emergency grant request memorandum with the revisions regarding the value in the floodplains. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposing, same. Motion carries. Can get it as quick as you guys get it, call me.
Yeah, I'll go over and talk to Chuck when I'm done here. And then the third piece that we're doing now, and there, there likely will be more, um, but the third piece in the iron in the fire right now is the emergency watershed protection funds through the NRCS. And rather, and in Fremont County, they are sponsoring that request. But Ben is here to talk about the Soil Conservation District sponsoring that request.
I understood that the, uh, Fremont County Conservation District was sponsoring it during the Hayden Park, but.
It's, uh, no, it's the Fremont County Board of Commissioners.
What this is, um, maybe I'd like to have Ben, one of you.
Sure.
Address it, would that be?
Yeah.
Sure. So the emergency watershed protection grant through the NRCS, which is the federal agency in the Department of Ag that works with private landowners, makes this funding available for, uh, various disaster recovery programs, particularly fires. Um, and it can be used on these measures, recovery measures, not only flood mitigation, but on both public and private land. This funding would focus on private and/or local county lands. So for example, the community center and library would be eligible. We would not look to focus this on forest service land. Uh, there are different sources of funds there. Um, it's one of few grant sources available for private landowners, in a sense. Um, it's a, it's been a somewhat obscure process to understand how it works, and we're right at the deadline, as it turns out, um, on Friday. And so this just came to our attention very recently. Um, but the, the Custer County Conservation District, formerly known as the Soil Conservation District, is willing to sponsor this grant. Um, it's a seventy-five percent cost share, and the twenty-five percent cash match can be a combination, it's not a cash match, the twenty-five percent match can be a combination of cash and in-kind. So, for example, landowner and volunteer time can be counted towards that effort, uh, but not until the contract's signed. So things people are doing right now, or just spring, wouldn't qualify. Uh, the way the process works is we put in the request, the NRCS would send a team down to do their own evaluation, preliminary engineering and so forth, and would determine what the amount of money needed to protect their target resources would be. So we don't know what the grant would cost at this point. We've been talking to Fremont County and everybody that Cindy's been mentioning. They put in the request in October and unfortunately haven't heard back yet. So this can take a while, even if it's being asked to be fast-tracked. Um, but we have to get the ball rolling. So, um, that's fundamentally the program. Am I forgetting anything particularly about the EWP, Kate, or something?
No, thanks.
So.
So who do you need the commitment of the other twenty-five percent?
So, right. So that's the other part of this. And the, the district and San Isabel Land Protection Trust are also working on this, looking for other sources of funding, how to put this puzzle together of matching funds. Um, state funds can be used to match this NRCS grant, since it's federal. Um, but so can local and other types of funds. We don't know, because we don't know the amount, we can't say what the match is gonna be. However, it sounds like the Fremont County one with the Hayden Pass fire was in the magnitude of a half million dollars. Um, some of these structures, retention ponds and so forth, cost several hundred thousand dollars to construct. Um, and we're not sure if that's the, the exact type of project we'd be looking at.
But that was just on private land?
Uh, in their case, I think, I don't know if it's on private or public, um, you know, to be determined.
But I, I'm, I'm assuming in their case, it may be, fair amount of public land, because there wasn't, other than runoff, there wasn't a whole lot of damage on private land.
Right, right.
A lot of mitigation required on the horseland.
Sure, sure. Slowing the water down as much as possible, working from the top to the bottom. But, um, you know, there's, as you know, a variety of places that damage can, will occur when the flooding happens. So the, the valuation would follow, but if we were to presume there's a half million dollar grant, the match would be a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. If we were to put in, you know, and the land trust were willing to organize volunteer work, labor and so forth, um, I feel like we could probably come up with several tens of thousands of dollars of in-kind match, cumulatively. Um, but that leaves a significant cash match. So there's one possibility is some of these other funds through the state could be part of the match. Um, but other than that, we continue to look for other sources. So, um, so it, it's, we think it's helpful that the Conservation District can step up and manage this grant. Um, it will have some associated costs. And so I would like to make a request, actually a staged request, for funding assistance from the county. One part of it would be for administrative support and help with the Conservation District itself. Um, and I wanted to mention also the other Conservation District activity, which, uh, segues with other interests here at the county, is on the west side in the forests of the Sangre's. The Conservation District has procured a separate half million dollar grant through the NRCS also, to work on forest health, fire mitigation, logging on the west side. That's just starting this year, twenty seventeen, it's a five-year grant. Um, we had the same puzzle there of how do we fund the administration, the, the forest planning, the harvest planning, actual marking of trees and so forth, to get that work done. So we're looking to scale that effort up. Um, the same, you know, limited staff at the conservancy, the Conservation District, and land trust will be also continuing to assist the Junkins fire. So, um, while there's some unknowns, basically, from the Conservation District's side, we're asking for some assistance upfront with capacity and later, as we know, if the EWP comes through and we know that funding amount, I would think we'd like to return again with a cash match component. So that, that amount would be determined later.
So, I'm just ballparking, but let's say you're, I think maybe a half million dollars?
Let's say a half million.
Okay, that means we have gotta find a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Correct. Less whatever in-kind contribution. So let's say a hundred thousand.
Okay, a hundred thousand dollars. And you're looking for what kind of a?
Well, my thought right now was to ask for, um, a modest sum to help support the Conservation District, assuming the grant management, administration and all the, um, the work involved that we're, you know, in a sense, we're leaving the county of the obligation. Um, there are a list of obligations involved, procuring access, assuring contracts are in place and so forth. And the district is well positioned to do that, it's the right thing to do. Um, yes, Jay?
Yes, before, ma'am.
Well, this is the number I've been trying to hone in on. And recognizing that the district, we really only have a one-day-a-week employee, but we're taking on these two big projects. My thought right now is to ask for fifteen thousand dollars over two years.
So fifteen or fifteen?
Fifteen. Fifteen, as a support for the Conservation District to implement these programs. And then later, we would come back, once we have the, the EWP, the Junkin Fire Recovery Grant in hand, and we're working towards that hundred thousand match, hopefully we'll bring, we'll be bringing in several sources of funding. And we would not be looking to the county for even the majority of that funding, a highly leveraged minority of that funding. Um, and that could be, you know, Fremont County's indication, it could be six months, it could be a year from now, we don't know. Unfortunately, there are these delays, even though, um, you know, the runoff is in a matter of months. So, um, so that, you know, being a little uncertain about the funding needs, but wanting to put some capacity behind it through the Conservation District, my request at this point would be fifty thousand over two years to the Conservation District alone, uh, to help administer and implement these projects. Both the district and the Cape Land Trust having part of this response scheme, um, which is very important in providing access to public private properties and knowing who to go to to get the work done. So it's a continuation and expansion of that work from the Conservation District.
One of the issues of, excuse me, were you through?
Yeah, yes.
Go ahead.
Please.
And we were just talking. We have potentially a very severe situation in Wetmore and Greenwood. That, if we screw it up, we could lose some lives. Uh, if a major flood materializes, I mean, you guys are part of prevention, but if we have a major flood down there, we potentially can use, lose three or four different bridges. And if that happens, then we are immediately behind the eight ball. And how do we pay to recover those, cause they're out of budgets?
Sure.
We do have a limited amount of emergency funding, but it won't come close to doing that. So if that happens, we're, our, our first step is, I think Cindy, as we talked, is you'll have to be applying for some grants.
Mm-hmm.
To see what we can do to put those back in. Uh, but we do have a, you're probably somewhat familiar with Greenwood.
Sure.
As you drive down through there, uh, there's one place in Greenwood that they call the California House. The big round house, there's a bridge right beside it. Uh, I think that's certainly gonna be a high risk. Uh, it looks like the one above it, uh, could be. Uh, we get down into Wetmore itself, the, the bridge, when you come off the highway and come down and cross over, is not very, not very big. Uh, but we could have. And then also, in addition to that, uh, we think the bridge, as you go over North Creek with South Hardscrabble comes in, is probably gonna be okay, potentially. But as we go over North Creek, we're gonna have a bridge on the south side of North Creek, just above the Pueblo County line, that's probably going to wash. If it doesn't wash the bridge out, it's gonna wash the road around it. Uh, we have two culverts over there, they're fairly high risk. And in part of that, on, on North Creek and also, uh, through Greenwood, uh, the, the road runs right alongside the creek. I mean, the creek is, the road's in the creek. Uh, and then the other area we talked a little bit earlier about is the, it's called the Smith subdivision, right there at the bottom of Hardscrabble.
Mm-hmm.
Those guy, I don't think those guys realize, again, that could be, it's private property and private bridges. But again, if there's some disaster.
You do know.
Uh, but having said that, I'm gonna let my colleagues, uh, see what they think.
Um, I would like to support your efforts. Um, I would just like to have a little bit of time to talk to our county accountant. Um, there may be some funds that we can pull from somewhere, uh, to help this over a two-year period. I don't think that's an unreasonable request, fifteen thousand over two years, is what you're asking.
That's the question.
And, you know, my thoughts are because of a targeted conservation project on the west side, and because we wanna, um, Robin Young and I have talked with Jim Webb about using some Pelt funding over there, that maybe on the green mitigation side, you know, we could have that assistance, and maybe we could play a role with that. Um, that's been kicked around as an idea. Um, another idea we've kicked around that's a little off track was that maybe Conservation Trust funds could be used to do some of the protection work at the community center, because that would be ineligible, potentially eligible, um, expense. So there's, there's a lot of pieces in trying to get all of this together, but it's.
How will you distribute this funding?
Well, it would be, within the Conservation District, um, you know, part of it would be staff capacity, staff and contractor capacity, to, to make these projects happen. Um, that funding level is inadequate to do the actual capital projects, culverts, bridges and so forth. Um, so I would suggest it would be at the district's discretion to follow the purposes of this, of these projects. And that's.
Because in terms of private land, I'm just guessing, but I'll bet seventy percent on Bill Donnelley.
Sure.
And, and trying to catch some of that. And there is, and I can share this document. It's, I think Teresa's still working on it, but it's the site tour document and some of the recommendations they're gonna make, and we're gonna. recommendations they're going to make. And we're going to hash through this on Monday and some of her ballpark figures. But the emergency water protection fund, EWP funding, can be used for private and public, is my understanding. But you get to things like the state and it's only public, it's only roads and culverts. And so, so we got to kind of fit, find a mix of both. And especially if we need to catch basing on a private land piece to protect the public infrastructure, this might be the only place we can get funding. The other thing we didn't talk about was the Forest Service applied for a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars and they got their funding. And that's specifically for what they perceive as their targets at risk in South Hardscrabble. And they walked us through those projects. So, so there's a lot of moving pieces and a lot of funding coming together.
And where I'm coming from, I guess, is that, and they're small. But the Elk Ranch and Junkins Park, there's about forty acres there that really needs attention. And the reason it does, it's going to wash out a road to access to a property behind the Elk Ranch. And, and I know that the owner is already, I've got a list of people to send him now, people he's trying to find someone to come in and clean it up and someone to replant it.
And we did talk about that last week after you left, the replanting, and this comes back to the public education piece, we really need to replant with the oats and the, you know, it's too soon for trees. Everything will die because the soil is too acidic. And so, we really need to educate the, and, and not me, because I'm not.
Is that where Robin?
Yeah, it's where Robin comes in and starts saying, don't plant this until, you know, two years down the road. So.
This gentleman is looking to hire a private company.
Right.
Who does this type of stuff to come in and do it for him. He's not going to do it himself. It'll, it'll be a contract job. But there again, if we can help out, if there was some, it's not a lot, but it does protect the bridge we have right below his place.
And I know.
Because that culvert's going to go.
Yeah. The, on day three, which I wasn't a part of, but they went and toured some of the private land owner issues. And she was looking at some things very specific. I know they made it up to, what, you made it to?
The Thomases?
Thomases and.
And a lot of time on Bill Donnelly and then some of the, the Swanson's property that's.
What did you spend on, on Mountain Meadows?
Mountain Meadows.
Which one is Mountain Meadows?
Top on one sixty-five.
None. Okay, see, there's another place, it's Burn Hard. It's up there at the, what we call Wickson Divide. And, and that's an area to me that needs attention also.
Well, and CAT does have all the parcel owners. And I was emailing them information. I gave them all the structure data that burnt. You know, we know there's some folks who didn't lose structures, like Swanson's, that are, are in the high intensity burn area. And between the high intensity and moderate, you know, fifty-four percent of the burn is, is high to moderate intensity. So, out of, out of all the big burns this year, you know, we had the one that burned the hottest, that's going to have the worst soil conditions and the worst probably potential for flooding. And then.
How many landowners will this benefit? Any idea?
Well, we have to determine the projects and we have to prioritize the projects on the need.
How many private landowners burned? Any idea there?
I don't.
I'm guessing probably twenty.
I think that's Burn Hard. Yeah, six, we know of six that we've worked with, with Conservation easements. And so, that was probably, yeah, I guess, a third to a quarter.
Yeah, because some of them were very large landowners, which, you know, again, is sort of a, a good thing, because had this fire been in Quine Verde where they have a thousand whatever lots.
Yeah, we've kind of jumped its path, you know, and you've got, the Elk Ranch, we're right over the hill. You've got Bliss's place. And he probably doesn't want anything. That's been, that's been what we've heard. We come down across the road, then you're back into a school section. And this won't be, won't qualify for school section land. But as you go.
Yeah, the state's not looking to do anything. The state.
As you go a little farther north or south, well, then you run into Everharts and some bliss there. And then, or Mountain Meadows. And there's places there that burn fairly hard.
Yeah. And, and keep in mind too, EWP funding has to be put in strategic places to protect the watershed. So, somebody like Swanson's who may not impact the watershed, we can't do it at all anyway. So, so were you talking about like maybe Timlins? If it's protecting the watershed and not the road, but, you know, it, it comes back to those watershed issues.
But that's an area because of, where it burned across face that hill.
Yeah.
And it's just, it's burned hard.
Yeah.
And it's steep.
Yeah. But if the primary watershed issue ends up being South Hardscrabble as opposed to further, I don't know that, I don't have my fire intensity map with me. I know Swanson's were on the high intensity. And, and it looks like Timlins just, you know.
Well, we're getting too deep when we talk about that.
Yeah, we are. But there's, yeah, so that, that comes further into the recovery process of trying to prioritize these projects and where they need to be and what watersheds they're protecting and what wells they're protecting. And so, so I think, you know, I think we've got to get, where Ben's at a, a deadline is he's got to get a letter in by, by this Friday to say that they want to move forward with this.
And that's independent of any funding commitments from the county. The district will proceed with the application and, you know, the matching fund challenge will persist.
We've got a responsibility to help. But also, we've got the responsibility repairing infrastructure.
Yeah, absolutely.
It could, I'm seeing millions, I shouldn't be, but that's what I'm afraid of when we get down to it.
That's no question.
Well, what do we want? Just a, do you want a letter from us or something? Or would you?
I, I don't think that's necessary at this point. If you would entertain the request for funding and it doesn't have to be immediate, absolutely, you're on due diligence. There's time for that. We're proceeding with the district on both fronts. And, you know, we just want to create the partnership and keep.
So, what do you say, something to the effect that we will participate to the extent possible?
That's great.
Would be sufficient for you?
Sure, sure. Absolutely.
Is that senior?
That's good. And I can show you later where it can come from.
I strongly support this effort. And if we could find the money, I would be happy to give it to them.
Yeah, the effort's necessary, but the money, the, the, what we're looking at in terms of potential tragedy, we've got, you know, we're trying to clean up the volunteers and stuff. And we'll make it work. And that's the one, how to pull out this thing. Pull us together and pool our resources and we make it work.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Anything else, Cindy?
The only other thing is, I, I briefly mentioned was the tier-two funding. You know, Robin and I would like to move forward and get Jim moving and, and publish some of that. And I, I know not everybody's seen his project, but he gave us an à la carte bid on a dew shed protection plan, which spans the whole west side of the Songres. And we've got some PILT funding that if we don't spend it, we lose it. And so, once, if we get this staffed position, we would like to have them continue writing CWPPs. I've got another community that's approached me that started their own. And Dave Tunsing and I met with them. But, but we'd like to kind of get Jim rolling with that one and pick and choose. Jim Webb is a contractor that has been doing a lot of the CWPPs in Fremont County. And so, there's some very stringent posting requirements, some public notice requirements on spending the PILT funding. And I think we've got close to thirty-eight thousand dollars. But I think if we don't have it earmarked, it's by like July or August, then, you know, we're going to end up losing it. And then we'll have another seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars coming in this year. It, I think we've put the initial proposal in, in probably September, October. It sort of got tabled until the new year. So, I don't know if, you know, if you're comfortable letting Robin and I run with that, or we need to have a separate agenda item and sit down and, and talk about the, the project or workshop or what you want.
How much money are we putting in there?
Well, we're going to spend all of our PILT funds from the, we've got two years of PILT funds that need spent. We got a third year coming in this year. So, we're looking to spend probably about thirty-five thousand dollars on this project on the west side.
My thought is, we need to have a presentation because it's a, a fund expenditure.
I'd like to have a workshop.
Okay. Okay. So, if we can, I'll work with Brenda to get that scheduled and get the vendor up. He's going to be gone for the rest of February. But if we can get him up here in March and do a presentation and come up with some.
Did you find out who called me? Who, when Paul was talking, who he was talking about?
No, Paul didn't call me back.
Okay. One of our people we're working with supposedly told the Forest Service that the money they had could only be spent on private land. And I suspect he misspoke because I don't know who'd be working with the Forest Service for money on private land. They're probably working on public land. I'll try to clarify.
That's, that sounds like EQUIP funding on private land.
I mean, that'd be accurate for EQUIP, but if it's Forest Service.
I don't, no, I couldn't hear who he said it was. I asked him again. And I'll get a hold of Paul too. But we need to. That's a part between us to clarify. But I don't want an opportunity to go by if we can find it.
Yeah. So, the twenty-fifteen PILT funding was nineteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. The twenty-sixteen was eighteen thousand three hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And then the, they were deposited in July and May. So, I'm thinking the twenty-seventeen funding will probably be in May or so again. But it's, you know.
And you're going to check and see if we use any of the PILT funding in Wetmore.
I'm going to see. It's, but it, the statute's very clear that it's fire mitigation. So, we're sort of, you know, to clean up dead trees in the creek and call it fire mitigation is a bit of a stretch, but.
Well, it goes right down to the rest of the town.
Well, it can burn. It's burned down there about six times in the last decade. So, yeah. So, I'm, I'm, I'll be following up with Dennis and we'll get a presentation scheduled and whatever works for you.
What's your schedule next few days? You going to be in town any of this week?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here.
Oh, maybe we need some.
Okay, yeah.
Are you comfortable?
Yep.
All right. Sorry, it's a lot, but it's been a lot.
Well, that's why I want a little more time. But we, I think we got the waterfront covered.
Okay.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Ben, thank you. Thank you for all of your efforts.
Thank you.
I assure you.
Thanks.
We will do what we can to make it happen.
Dan, I got your message late. Sorry about that.
It's good to see you.
Long day.
Okay.
Same here.
All right, thank you.
All right. I'll try to come tomorrow.
Whenever I see this lady walk a pink paper, I know I have to sign.
There you go.
Okay, I think Jackie's next. Is she on the agenda?
Okay, so usually in, usually in February, we look at our fee schedule and see if it needs to be adjusted. Last year, we left it alone. Probably after our workshop Monday, depending on how that goes, we might have to add another fee on a fee line for that permit.
Marijuana, is that what you're saying?
Use the word.
Okay, so, that'll be another fee line that'll have to be added. But when we had our little get-together, all of us, Ms. Hood asked for the information from Weld County. And so, I added that in there also. So, I don't know if you want to keep the fee schedule as it is, or if you see anything that you would like to raise.
What's your recommendation?
I think that right at this point in time, we're doing pretty good. I think we're fine. Compared to other counties, yeah, they're a little bit higher than us. But at this time, I don't have a problem with it.
What's a wildlife review?
That is like if you get a PUD or a planned unit development or some, or we used to have CUPs too, you have to have a wildlife review done. It's in a, is there any stating that if you have the, you know, animals running through your?
Give it through a migration route or something.
Yeah, correct.
I went through this. Looked like we were, like you said, not quite as high as other counties. And I think Weld is the one that we've been kind of focusing on because they're about our size. You know, I, I didn't think it was a significant difference. So, you know, I would accept your resignation.
Thanks.
I'm sorry.
That was mean.
I apologize. Your recommendation.
See, that's what happens when you go with that.
Your recommendation.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with it, but I defer to my colleagues. And I, I, you know, where that came from.
I'm your quietel.
I'll have a cookie for that one. That'll be my excuse for this year.
One problem we've had in the past, I think we need to think about addressing as a board of commissioners. Rarely so often, we get a request come in to waive some fees. And I think we need to have a, we can develop some kind of a standard policy.
I agree.
So, it's not, well, you did this, but you won't do it for me, kind of a thing. Granted, there needs to be exceptions, but I would prefer to have less exceptions and more of a policy-driven.
How do you handle this now?
I bring them before the county commissioners to decide.
Okay. They come to us and it's just, it's, it's tough to make a decision?
I think that consistency too would be great. Like, you know, when you guys do a policy, I think that it would help, you know, because it is. And usually I try to bring them in because it's very hard on you guys to look at a woman that's crying, isn't it?
Not in my case.
Not anymore.
Yeah.
Just don't write that down.
She put that right after her resignation.
Oh, yeah. She started.
We had a, we had a situation last year where people had a building permit and they'd had illness. I believe, I think it was a WIS. And we extended their rebuilding permit at no cost because we felt the fact that they had been ill and, and delayed their construction was a mitigating factor. That's an example of some of these.
Compassion is something we definitely all need, all human.
I never wanted to ask. It was about tiny homes.
About what?
Tiny homes.
Tiny dwellings.
Yes, tiny dwellings.
I will tell you.
Oh.
You getting any?
Last night, last night, just FYI, I, you know, I wear multiple hats. The town of West Cliff outlawed tiny dwellings. If anything, less than six hundred and sixty feet in the city limits. I'm just throwing that out. Previously, they had it zoned. You could have a tiny dwelling in a specific zone, like they would zone trailer homes. Last night, they decided just to do it completely. I, I'd say that.
Just to do what? I missed.
To do away completely in the town. As far as I know, there are none in West Cliff at the moment. Now, I bring that up not because I'm trying to sway or, just as a discussion item.
Okay.
I'm just.
We have three or four of them.
I'd like to know if you, if we have any in the half.
We have three or four tiny homes. But we also have, which is different than a town, we don't have a municipality with water and sewer. So, in order to build a dwelling, you have to have a septic system prior to even getting a zoning permit. And your septic persistent, your septic system is sized for two-bedroom minimum. So, we don't care if you only have one bedroom in your tiny home, you have to have two bedrooms. Your septic is besides for two bedrooms. Also, with the plumbing code, you have to have at least one flushing toilet in your home. So, you will not pass the plumbing code with a tiny home unless you have at least one flushing toilet.
I think a lot of tiny homes I've seen got a bathroom in.
But sometimes they're chemical. So, this one has to be flushy.
Not a flushable.
And that's something else on that board need to talk about. You basically have said we can't have chemical toilets.
The state.
Pardon?
The state has.
And, and chemical toilets or something that are, you know, used.
I'm just curious.
Well, not necessarily chemical composting is a difference.
But the state is saying that.
But you're saying, is it just across the board, two bedrooms? Or is there a size connected to the two bedrooms?
No.
No size. So, somebody could have a fold-out bed and a closet and that could be considered a bedroom?
Bedroom. And you have to have, and then if you ever look at your well permit, your well permit wants you to put the water back into the water table. And the way to get the water back into the water table is through a septic system. Because you're supposed to be able to drink the water when it's leached out and not leach-filled. Okay, so, the state says that you have to have a plumbing permit and you have to pass the plumbing code and be inspected. The state does not say that you have to have an electrical. So, that's the difference. But we have state inspectors and part of our compliance inspection is making sure that you do have finals. And you'll see that on some of my letters. Because that's part of the closeout of your zoning permit. So, in essence, we do have four tiny homes. In fact, tomorrow I will be going out to look. So in essence, we do have four tiny homes. In fact, tomorrow I will be going out to look at a tiny home that was dropped with no permit.
I think I saw that. Was that in your, included in here? There was somebody with that. I couldn't tell that it was a tiny home. There was somebody you were following up on that did not have a permit.
That probably, no, that's tomorrow, yesterday was the first tiny home complaint.
My position on this is that I think we need to make it possible for that tiny homes. We have a lot of land that people own a lot, just sitting there empty, and if they're able to put something on that lot that doesn't cost them $200,000, they might then become a resident or part-time resident. Uh, we have people that have small hunting cabins and stuff. And we get down to it, where are we? Where do we draw the line? And a tiny home, what I've looked at, uh, and I'm disappointed that, that West Cliff took this position, but a tiny home in most cases I've seen are engineered to be, to be durable.
And Fremont County is not allowing them, tiny homes. That's how come we're seeing these tiny homes coming up here.
And on the other side of the coin, uh, Salida has a very large tiny home community that they developed from the community that is going to help relieve some of their housing, housing shortages that they have in Salida.
Uh-huh, but the state health regs, state septic regs, CDPHG says that any time that you occupy any structure, you must have a septic system.
I'm not arguing that. You put in a septic system and you meet what our requirements are.
And I don't have no problem.
Then go.
If you want to eat and sleep off the same bench, go for it.
Right. Um, would you be able to put these in the PUDs?
That would be up to the planning commission and the ultimate would be your decision.
Just wondering, I mean, because they're already planned areas that we have.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
What is the planning commission meeting again?
But those are.
We're trying to still get it together.
You're talking about cuts.
I'm waiting for the information from all.
But those are areas that we plan for development. I'm thinking of, of the guy that's got 35 acres out here that doesn't have anything on it. And maybe we encourage him to get something out there and, and maybe start to spend a few more dollars in town if they've got someplace to stay.
Oh, yeah, I, I agree totally. Now, some of the subdivisions, like, uh, I don't know what Bull Domingo did about the tiny homes, but I do know that they just sent in a piece of paper. Now, remember, we don't enforce covenants, but we try to help. We try to work together. And I know that Bull Domingo now will not allow containers. So, you know, there's some subdivisions, they might have it that there's no tiny homes and stuff like that, but we don't try to discourage because we feel that if you do your due diligence with the septic, with electrical, the plumbing, then we're good to go. And you can haul your water. You don't have to have a well, so, yeah. They're cute. Not for me, but they're cute.
Did that answer? Were you were?
It looked good. Okay. So, uh, like I said, the only thing I can see on this is if we would have to add the marijuana fee.
We don't know that till after we get the workshop. Thing put together and approved and so forth. Uh, you had a few force force here?
Well, actually, I have a lease that needs to be signed and I included it in my report. It's, um, Lorton's lease, they sell into Mr. Geipel, and these are the originals. And I need, um, the chairman sign. Trying to make sure that I get.
Is this a painter lease?
Yes. Uh, Bob, how about if I hand this all to you and that way you can flip them and find out where you need, so I don't get them out of order?
We got them here, don't we, too?
Yeah, but this is the original.
I thought we already did something with Geipel on the lease. Well, did you, didn't you have me sign an airport lease and?
But that was for another person. That was, uh, Mr. Craig, the last one. That wasn't Geipel.
I think you guys talked about Geipel in a previous meeting, but I don't think you did anything, right? Didn't you talk about that?
And Mr., um.
Could I just ask a question before you do that? Did we resolve the question on our fees? You know, I just made a recommendation that we'll keep them. Did we resolve them or what?
Oh, we didn't make a motion.
On the, on the zoning and planning fees? I just made a comment that I, that I agreed with your recommendation, not resignation, and please forgive me.
We can, we can take an action, but if, uh, no action in its place is let things continue as they are, as they were not required to review them every year. Would you like to make a motion to that there?
You don't feel what's necessary, but I just didn't know that if my colleagues concurred with my suggestion. That was where I was really going with that question.
Yeah, that was fine. I mean, until we have the workshop, we can't.
That's fine. I just hadn't heard from you on that issue.
I don't have any issue with it.
Great, let's stay where we are.
Okay, so the one I had, you signed the other day, was for hanger lease five, and it was Crosskill.
Okay, and which one is this one?
This one is Lorton, and his lease is not up until 2034, so, but they still need permission to do the transaction between themselves. Lorton needs permission.
His was just renewed four years ago?
No, his was renewed many years ago. I didn't bring my airport book.
How come it's so long? Because we allowed some that long.
You have three of them that was allowed so long.
I see we had one in here or someplace I saw it from Redmond.
Yes, and Redmond donated a million dollars.
Yeah, I mean, I, that to me makes sense because he was a big contributor to the airport.
Wendy Camp donated, uh, fuel system.
It's like the, I'll pass it over to Craig. I don't see any issues. It's a routine transaction.
Yeah, so just, it is. So all I need is your signature, Mr. Katnick, and we can get it recorded.
Six or eight empty hangars, but lots at the airport for hangers. And I'm going to see if we can get the airport people to start to try to market some of those.
Okay, um, Mr. Walkup and Walkup is taking all three of the airport maps and putting them on one. I think I included that in my report. I'm hoping that we'll have one within the next couple of weeks, but I did put 30 days. I also spoke with a Mr. Green today about some T-hangers and stuff, but I, my only job for the airport is to sell the leases and try to get people situated in a lease that fits them. The rest of it, I stay out of. Where the T-hangers go, I know where the T-hangers, you know, but I think we have got some other ideas that the board maybe hopefully will present.
He may be more up to date than I am, but we talked about trying to find some T-hangers that we could, that the airport would own, that they could rent on a dating basis.
Yeah, a question came up at the last board meeting and, um, there was a lot of discussion. There were no decisions made on the T-hangers. They were just talking about it at the time.
But that's something we're looking at as additional source of income. If people are flying overnight and want to have someplace to put the plane, and if they did that and we have a hangers out there, then we can charge them.
That's why I was hoping Walkup and Walkup would get that map, because this right here.
That's the map I looked at.
Uh-huh, this right here is where the T-hangers were supposed to be sitting.
And, and I think one of the questions, one of the concerns they had, they hadn't actually made that decision.
What were you drawing? T-hangers? Down back here, up here.
Right here. That's the road. And then when Walkup and Walkup gets done, they were talking about, we had a D's designated for T-hangers.
With Redmond, no, here's his hanger over here. This is real, yeah, that's where, yeah. But just looking at it.
But there's a problem because it's not paved. A lot of air.
It's not a problem. They paved it.
Okay, thank you. That was a question.
They do it, but we're gonna, they're gonna do it, and, and this is Jay's bird not applying, but they have to do it where it's.
But I, I'll provide the map and you guys, um, the previous board had agreed to pay for it out of your funds, and that's 500 bucks. But it's definitely needed. It's three maps of the airport combined into one. That should have been done a long time ago. And I'll make sure that Walkup gets that map to us and then the leases I got in my file cabinet, so we're good.
I just want to make sure that that's not interfering with what was brought up to our attention yesterday. That grant that we might be able to get and putting the road to the east of where it is now, is that going to interfere?
If we put some other hangers there?
Yeah.
I don't, like, I, I can't say it won't, but I don't think it will because we already have hangers there and the airport, the runway's not going to be that far. I mean, it's, it's still going to be close to the, to the terminal and stuff out there. All right, I have, Jackie, very quickly, uh, is it okay?
Yeah.
Do I have a motion from the board to sign the airport hanger lease of Geipel and Lorton?
I'll make the motion to sign the lease.
Okay, it looks like right there, the by.
And Lorton.
So I make the motion.
Okay, discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, motion approved.
Kelly's probably better at this than me.
I think they'll sign up here down where it says by, I guess.
I, where it says. Kelly, this needs notarized. Can you sign it and I hand it to you and you get it notarized, please?
But I'm gonna sign on here.
Yeah, um, the top's all yours.
Acknowledged before me this day, that's a notary. And this is a state of Texas.
It's just, uh, right there's your signature.
Now, this is the notary part. What's the, is that the first page?
He doesn't have to do this one?
That's the notary part. So all do that is him signing, and then somebody else has to do Lorton.
Lorton's, I know, then you're gonna give it back to me, and then I'm gonna give it to Geipel, and Geipel can take care of the rest.
Well, this acknowledgement's for Lorton.
Okay, yeah, Geipel can send it to Lorton.
So I'm done signing.
Yeah.
All right, real quickly, because we got a question behind us. Uh, I would like to address, are there anything else you need there?
No.
I'd like to address the correspondence where we are. For those of you on, you see 10124451, uh, with a certified mail receipt on Little Bear. That's where we've had the marijuana activity busted three times. And the structure's not in compliance in terms of electrical and plumbing. Would you like to see this letter?
I, I think, I did see it.
It was in her packet that she gave us.
But I didn't realize it was what it was.
And this is just an FYI for our information, basically, but it's, we're trying to find ways to, to get that issue taken care of out there.
One of the, one of the, um, owners came into my office last week and wanted me to come out to the structure because they wanted to put the structure up for sale, and at this time, they're having a hard time finding someone that will list it. So, uh, I contacted a deputy and spoke with our attorney, and I went out there with a deputy. They had removed my cease and desist cards, and so that's how come you'll see that the cease and desist cards will go back up on it. And, uh, what they do is they put plumbing and electrical in it, and, um, probably Monday during our workshop, I will show you some pictures of the electrical and the plumbing, and then you'll see why, um, it's not, never been compliance inspected because of the electrical and the plumbing.
Do you have a time period on things like that?
Yes. Uh, we have, uh, you have to have a compliance inspection, have to have your, you have to, before you can occupy a building, you have to have a compliance inspection, which means an electrical, plumbing and, and, uh, electrical and plumbing, tram plus final. We need your final from the state, but that doesn't always happen, especially when you're doing something like this. You're not going to call the zoning.
Am I mistaken? I thought that once someone removes a cease and desist, do not enter notice, that it's actually a criminal offense? Is that, am I wrong on that?
Well.
I don't think that there's, it's a criminal violation. I mean, this is just a procedure that we have to tell somebody they can't occupy the property at all. If they violate it, then it's our obligation to go to court and get a court order. That's what we need to do.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
So I, I will be going back out there with the deputy to place, but I also want them to get this building cleaned up. And when I say cleaned up, the electrical and the plumbing out of there, so that it can go up for sale. And then the other letter.
Getting it was kind of jimming, right? Does that what you meant? Did it just kind of wires hanging and stuff like that?
No, it was actually done pretty good, but it, but it was, what do you want to say? Over, you could run a lot of stuff off it.
They have it built for marijuana growing with a electrical capacity to handle light consumption, and then that wasn't inspected, and it's not what we would need for.
Then the other one, and then I guess that is, uh, every time you see a letter, you'll see a number at the top. That's a parcel number for your property tax, and that's how you're filed in the zoning office. So this letter was for the file, and I put for file. That way, if you walk in there and you pull the file, you can see a timeline of actually what has happened on that certain piece of property. The other one was, um, a different number. So this is, um, a letter stating to this gentleman that you're correct. It was a tiny home. And, uh, um, he didn't ever get a dwelling permit, but he got a septic. So he was told to get a dwelling permit. He said that, uh, he didn't have to because it was on Wills. So I said, okay, then it needs current license plates, which he had some from Oregon. Then I said, but you're tied, because what they did was put a concrete pad and then put the eye bolts and tied this down. I says, no, we're land use, so whatever you do with your land, you have to do something through the County Planning and Zoning. And we don't care if you build, we have some, what do you call them? Containers underground? You still have to permit them.
Your what?
Containers.
What did you say?
You still have to permit them.
Yeah, were those permitted?
Yes. And then the rest is what you'll receive.
You're talking about big letter on this, the small one.
And the rest is what you'll see for a year-end report and January's report.
And I encourage you, thing I see in January, uh, over a year ago is that we're up, we're up nine permits of zoning. And, uh, that's the, that's a permit you issued.
I thought we were down in income compared to January.
Pardon me? Yeah, it just.
It's down.
Well, I was looking at this page here that showed, uh, and she hasn't listed the same thing, because one month is year-to-date. Financial summary, you're showing that we're down compared to a year ago. Uh, and I see a big, is in permit fees. What was, what would we have a year ago that was so much bigger?
Um, we'll have to see how many permits we issued.
A year ago, you issued five zoning permits.
And 14 this year. We must have had a large home. Oh, I know what we had. I bet you it was that large home that they paid three times the amount because they didn't get a permit. Because I, the, out on Reed Road, remember that one? It was like, should have been like two grand, and it was like 5,000 some, because it's three times.
So see, that would, the, the penalty would be the difference.
So if you don't get a permit for any structure, 100 square feet or more, you have to pay three times.
Do we have any other questions on her report?
I went through this, and I appreciate it because giving the comparisons on, uh, sorry, I need to get this to the others. I mean, this was completely.
of uncertainty about submitting these, but I, you did like you always did, give us time to go through, it made it a lot easier for me sitting here that I'd had time to go through.
Okay, yeah.
Appreciate you, everybody.
Don't-
And you might also, I'm just, just thinking off my head, but you might also, in front of these, if you see some things that are bullet points, or issues that we might be thinking about, just put, be thinking about, or-
Yeah, and then I think, too, you'll notice that on the front of the report, it's got the health department, I put none. So Bob's very used to going into the health department, but, thank you.
Thank you.
You don't, don't have to get up.
Oh, yes, I do.
Okay. We do it anyway. Kelly, do you have a cold?
I sure do, you want me to hand you a cup?
If I can move along, please.
Whatever.
Thank you. I think this does conclude our, our agenda, does it?
You left your paper behind, Jackie.
Yes.
What's that?
Okay. We are.
It's my favorite.
We have concluded the, the approved agenda. At this time, I'm going to declare the, does the workshop have to be part of the meeting?
No.
I'm, no, I mean-
I mean, it never has been.
No, no, I mean, the meeting's over.
Do we have anything else we need to talk about in executive session? Just come about during the day. Okay, I will declare the board of county commissioners adjourned at 1:10 PM, and we will reconvene at workshop at 2:00.